I'm gonna call the Select Board and Public Hearing of Monday, September 8th, 2025 to order at 6:01 PM. And we're gonna start with a public hearing for the Naples Recreation Center, which I believe Brian and company has a presentation to get started.
Are you interrupting?
Yep.
What am I supposed to do? Is this thing on? There you go. First of all, thank you to those who came out. There's still some people trickling in. I just wanna make something really clear upfront is that there's this Recreation Center and the work that's gone into it has been done by a large group of people, residents of the town of Naples. And it's been a long time coming. Before I get into the presentation, that was also, this presentation was created by a Naples resident who's passionate about this project. But before I get into that, I want to, really quickly, I just wanna say that it was, I believe it was 2013, might have been 2012. I was not working for the Town of Naples at that time, but I was still doing some volunteer work and recreation. And I called up the old Recreation Director in Naples and I asked him if I could have a basketball team I had come to a practice once or twice in their gym. And he said, "No, no, 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 we don't. Our gym's not made for that anymore." We, so at that point, there was no more, there was no more basketball. I don't know how long before that it had been. And I just, I bring that up because one of the things we hear occasionally is that, geez, this seems really rushed. We're doing this fast. And I know the first committee was created eight years ago, maybe almost now. So I don't think anything's fast. A lot of things have happened to get us to the point we're at now, so. So we can get right into the presentation. So first of all, I wanna talk about what, you know, what, what are we, what's the ask? You know, this committee was asked, this work group, sorry, this work group was asked by the residents through the Select Board, you know, really to kind of find a strategic path to build this complex, to build a complex that's gonna be affordable and backed by, with funding and sponsorship and not necessarily our taxes. And there's different plans. There is, you know, we're gonna ask today for the Select Board to agree to a plan. But that is, it's important to know that that doesn't stop the fundraising. It actually just is where it begins. So there's fundraising, donations, grants, all of that stuff is gonna go in. And the goal for that committee that's been working tirelessly is to make that happen. Why? I think we all, I think we can all agree with why. I mean, it's, you know, the community, it's a better quality of life, social, combat social isolation, grow existing programs, introduce new programs, utilize the times of day that aren't available to us inside right now for our senior population, our adult population, and just build a better community and not to mention bringing folks to our community to help with the economic opportunities for Naples. And nothing like a weekend basketball tournament to help out with our local restaurants and whatnot. So the answer is, health is wealth. So a small financial investment or a lot of work by our, by our resident group, you know, with fundraising, sponsorships, you know, forming partnerships, just access to so much more and so much more coming to the Town of Naples. So this slide is very interesting because I listed in my last, at the last meeting, a slide of all the things that I've heard about people wanting over the years. This is very similar. This is direct from surveys taken by Naples residents through our comprehensive plan and at Father Fest, which if you weren't at Father Fest, make sure you come back this year. It's phenomenal. So the, all of these things, and I'm not gonna stand here and read them to you, but there's just a lot of stuff. And these were directly from what people asked for in these surveys. I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of them, but I think that's, that's an impressive list. These are the things that our residents asked for. So some of the common questions, and I have common questions and I have direct questions that were asked at the last meeting that I wanna address, and I'll do that now. So I'm gonna start with a list that's not up there. We were asked at the last meeting a bunch of things. And I wanna, I want everybody to know that, you know, the committee's listening and it's been discussed. So I'm gonna go through some of these. We were asked to look at the seating. That 100 seats are not enough for what we're trying to do. The current seating plan is not 100, it's 150. But there is ample space to do two things. One, to use chairs along the sidelines now and to build more bleachers when it's financially more responsible. So this is the, this is the number we're at, the place we're at, we believe is a responsible number. But there is room and space to grow based on a need and the revenue to do so. Ted had asked to see a breakdown of the costs. They, all the Select Board members have that in front of you right now. It's very, very small print, so if you have any questions on that, we could talk a little bit more about that today. If you have questions, if anybody does, on that breakdown. We were also asked about whether there'd be ample ventilation. I am, I am told by the powers that be that the giant fans of the ventilation we have is plenty. But if Jim Gratello wants to speak to that at some point, he can as well. The interior layout, we're gonna share with you today. That was something we did not have at the last meeting. Colin asked about the nonprofit and what they can do. Just, I think a lot of you don't want, should know that there was a 401(c)(4) that is existing, has an existing designation that they, and now, once, if this is voted yes in November, their immediate focus is going to be on that fundraising. And that's the group I was talking about earlier. Colin, you'd also asked about future facilities plans. And I, at this point, I, that's one thing we really couldn't bring to you. That's not really in the purview of that group. But duly noted, and it's something we could speak about, but not me. I don't, I can't talk about that. We're talking about this particular facility. Steve and a number of Legion members were very concerned about parking. And we may get into that a little bit more, but I just want to let everybody know, let you know that we believe that doubling the parking, more than doubling the parking spaces, will take care of any issues. And then the design that you shared, and shame on us for just throwing a design out there, is just to make sure we could, did have the space for what we wanted to do. But where things are laid out, and I can guarantee you, there will be no islands. So that plowing issue will be taken care of, but this is just kind of a design they sent us to look pretty. But we believe that. We also, the Town of Naples would love to get involved in a parking agreement with the Legion to help with large events. Kevin expressed some concerns that it is not front-facing to Route 11. Again, that is just a plan that we had. That can be changed, but a lot of people we spoke to said they believe you see the front of the building a lot better, the way it would see it a lot better, and that it really frames the parking lot in the area with the Legion better. But that is not a set-in-stone design. Just the cost is. Ed, someone had asked about sprinklers. The current cost projections that we shared with you last, last meeting, there's $100,000 set aside to sprinkle the whole building. But there's also talk if the capacity is less than 300, we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily have to do that. So all that stuff is gonna be taken into consideration. But yes, that number that you saw, that 3 million includes the $100,000 to sprinkle. We had concern about noise. We went and stood outside and inside a similar building with the insulation. I don't believe, I don't think anyone believes noise is gonna be an issue. I'm sorry, there was a lot more of these than I thought. We had a question about a kitchen. Someone said they would not consider voting for this unless there was a kitchen. We have discussed that. That is gonna be thrown back into the plans to look at. If it can be afforded within that $3 million, it will be at least set up for a kitchen. But that has to be, that has to be budgeted and looked at. There was a concern about the snowmobile trail. The snowmobile trail will not be touched. It will not be affected. As a matter of fact, I'm pretty excited about the snowmobile trail coming right up to our potential rec center. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about this next one as far as location. And then we've been asked about cost of staffing. And I just wanna let you know that the projected cost of the staff, the heat, electricity and insurance is approximately about $130,000 annually. Revenue from the rec center will pay for that cost before additions are made, before it goes to other parts of the town as well. So I will talk about that a little bit more. So I'm sorry if that was really boring. We're gonna get back to this resident presentation now, so. Why can't we utilize the existing town space? We're gonna talk a little bit about that. In a nutshell, there, we, there was a plan for the existing town space. There were a lot of things that drove that cost up. And we believe this committee was tasked with finding a more affordable option. That was one of the many things that they checked off. And we believe that putting it over the plumber field is a more cost-effective way to make this happen. How will you cover the operational cost of the facility? I have talked too long, and I wanna hear what other people have to say. But I have a real breakdown of some revenue opportunities and very modestly, with basketball, pickleball, sports camps, fundraising events, conventions, other rentals. I get to that $130,000 number more easily than one might think. I'll be glad to answer specific questions about that if you have them or share that with the Select Board. And what about cost overruns? This is my, maybe my favorite part of this whole project. This is, whatever's voted on in November is the number. If there are any cost overruns, they need to be made by fundraising, donations and grants. And the building will not be built until the money is made. So that number, the number that you'll see on your ballot is the number. So one of the issues we have is usage, and I've heard, you know, we have, we have gyms. There's one right, very close to where we are right now. And I just wanna share some numbers with you. I don't have to go into the details, but that's a lot of hours where the gym is already being used. These four gyms are already being used. 9,780 hours on average per year for the four gyms. But honestly, all of those different things we're doing that are being, happening in the gyms now, if you look at that second line where its spaces are unavailable due to classes being in session from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, 180 days a year. So just that fact alone, I think is enough to realize that we need a gym that isn't in the school. That's 180, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a mathematician, but I think that's about half a year, so. So the estimated cost is 3 million, 3.5 million before donations, grants and fundraisings. How can that cost be reached? There's, there's a whole lot of work that went in. Like, I talked recently at a Budget Committee meeting. And one of the things that was, I was very impressed with, with this committee when I sat with them, is they consistently talked about, you know, what's the responsible thing to do? Every decision that was made, every price that they went, everything that they asked. You know, if they asked me, "Brian, go ahead and design," I believe we would have a swimming pool and a roller coaster and a whole bunch of stuff. But they kept me in check. When we talked a lot about wants versus needs, and that really kept that, kept that responsible approach. But there's gonna be lots of other ways to start work, making that money. And I'm gonna call on a special resident to talk about that in a little bit. Maybe very shortly, if you wanna start making your way down. All right, so this is a little bit about the structure. It's a 15,000, 15,625 square foot steel building. It's, we're gonna see a picture of the inside in a moment, with an accessory building on the outside. That accessory building would have bathrooms, a small meeting room, some storage, a pretty decent-sized kind of lobby. But it also helps the building look a lot better. I mean, it softens it. It's really nice. Obviously, we look at some of the activities. It's just a different view of the building. I don't know whose blue car that is. I haven't seen that around Naples. But it's, you know, the, it kinda ties in with the whole complex now, right? We have the plumber field with the baseball fields. We do some football on there, some soccer practices, you know, it kinda ties everything in. But it's not just sports. I mean, if you can see from some of the photos, some of the other stuff, it's not just sports. It's really just about gathering community events, all kinds of, all kinds of stuff. So the inside of the building is two high school-sized basketball courts. It's got a, it's a multi-purpose. So one thing that was important to the, to the committee was that this was not just for basketball and pickleball and volleyball, though it also suits those needs great. I actually went down and played. There were the ball. I didn't play too hard. I'm not the player I used to be. But I went down and spent some time on the court, and the ball reacts well. We've had pickleball players check it out. It reacts well. But also with this floor, it allows us to have a boat show and a craft show and to rent it out for a number of things. And to be, oops, to be more things to more people. So we really, we think that's important. This is kind of the layout. It's hard, it's a little hard to see there. We have a close-up in a second. But if you can picture the plumber field, where the back of the building is right now, I should run my laser pointer. So closer to us is Route 11. So in the, in the front of the door would be facing the Legion, the front of the building, that stick-built portion. So as you can see, there's parking all around the back and around the other side. It's moved into the parking lot a little bit. But it actually allows for a lot more, more access. We looked at a bunch of different plans. This is not set in stone. We wanted to know if it was doable and affordable. So this is the one we landed on for a lot of reasons. One, our fire chief really likes that they can get the truck all the way around in case of emergency. We like it close to the road, but this is not set in stone. We're already working on some different things with the parking to make it easier, but if you can show a little close-up. So this is a little bit closer view of what that would look like. For those who are familiar with the field, which I think is about everybody, that is the, you know, the left-field fence of the softball field towards the top of our screen there. The, the current outdoor pickleball courts and the, and the ice rink would be able to be placed somewhere else. I don't know how much time we need to spend on this. There are two rectangle courts. But we do, right there, you can see those courts are lined for eight pickleball courts. We've also looked at the design. We haven't decided on that for six, 'cause I like the way the lines look better, but we'll see what the need is. This volleyball court, because the divider curtain would be between those two. That's, if anybody has any questions, we can certainly go back to that. This is the design of the attached building. It's modest, but that has kind of been the responsible way, approach we've had to this, with some storage, a little small office. We are looking at a larger electrical room option because we don't think that's gonna be enough. But that's kind of, that's where we go. It's always changing. But there is definitely room on either side of the building to make that larger and to do that. Okay, what are we trying to do? We're trying to grow our current sports programs. Weather cancellations. If anybody was around last spring, we, it was hard to play baseball without an indoor facility. We lost over, we lost like 28 days and nine, nine Saturdays to rain. Recreation on your time, not available time. We go, we sent a lot of people to other towns to play sports. I mean, I think there are folks in this room right now that have either had to play pickleball in another town or take their basketball players far away for tournaments or even to practice. Just community, the overall community's health, mental health, physical health. More senior programming, which has been a goal for a while during, again, during time when it can be afforded. And again, this is a community, it's a rec center, but it's really for the community. And a lot of thought went into the space. And, you know, we could throw that curtain up and be having volleyball on one side and something else on the other. Like, it's more than just for sports, but that's a big part of what is gonna go on in that building. So that's what I have. I think Jim Gratello's gonna talk now about more of the nuts and bolts and the dollars and cents, so let's give it to Jim.
If the Select Board doesn't mind, I'd rather talk to the audience. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
All right. So let's, let's back up a second. The reason why we're here to begin with is because the Town of Naples lost a gym. Everyone seems to forget that. We lost our gym. And it's been almost six years and it still has not been replaced. The need was there six years ago, and the need has tripled since then. So I don't think anyone can debate the fact, we've lost a gym, and we need to replace that gym. Now unfortunately, over the last five years, there's been two attempts to do that. There's been two committees. And I've been doing this for a long time. And unfortunately, it's the nature of the beast. Committees have a tendency to run astray, to run wild, because the bigger the committee, the more the ideas and the more the things they want. And a lot of these committees grow a life of their own. It's happened in Naples. It's happened in Bedford. It's happened in Portland. It's happened throughout the state of Maine. It's just the nature of the beast. So the first committee brought us a package that was $17 million. It was to build a new town hall, a community center, and oh, by the way, we're gonna replace the gym. The second committee came in with a proposal, two years later, of a $7 million project. A huge community center, two floors, an L.L. Bean-looking building. And oh, by the way, we're gonna put a middle-school-sized gym in there. Today, we are before you with the task that we were asked to do by the Select Board. Figure out a way to replace the gym. That's what we've done. Not only that, we're gonna give you two gyms for $3 million. We're gonna ask for 3.5 for the voters, so we have a $500,000 contingency. We all believe we can deliver this for 3 million or less. We are not gonna dig one hole in the ground until all the bids are in and we know that we can build this for our budget. There's a committee ready to go hit the ground running to start fundraising. I'm not talking about bottle drives and car washes. I'm talking about meeting with the Alphon Center. I'm talking about meeting with the big players, the grants. We've already talked to Susan Collins' office. We're talking about getting significant amounts of money to bring this price down. But I assure you, we are not going to start construction unless all the bids are in and we know we can build this for the budget. So there will not be cost overruns. We will not go back to the voters, six months, a year into this, saying we need another million dollars. That is, well, it's not gonna happen on my watch, 'cause my name's gonna be associated with it. So I can assure you, it's not gonna happen. This, the picture that you saw, can you put the picture back of the actual, the basketball courts? I think it was like five or six back there. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, right there. That's my facility. I've already built, I own one of these. I'm in the process of building a second one. I know what these can be built for. I know what you can get. If we turn Brian loose in the rec department, I can assure you, within two to three years, not only will this building be self-sustaining, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be a great facility for the Town of Naples. And each year, when the budget is put together, they're not gonna have to come to you for more money to run the rec department in this town. 'Cause the revenue that's gonna be generated from this building is gonna more than cover the expenses associated with running the rec center. So one of the questions, one of the most important questions was, well, how do you know you can deliver this? Well, I've already told you, if we can't, we're not going to. But we have met with excavators. We already know what the cost of the building could be, 'cause I built one, and we already have an estimate. That 15,000, 500-square-foot building will be delivered, erected for $617,000. All we gotta do is put a foundation in the ground. These buildings are not expensive because they're built somewhere else and they deliver them on trucks and they erect them. That's the difference between this building and the other two proposals that were given to you over the last four years. Now, the other things that we've done in this project, and I'm gonna use a stupid example like bleachers. There's two ways to have bleachers. If you look in the far-left-hand corner underneath that basket, you can see the old-fashioned stand-up bleachers, metal bleachers, four steps high. That's what's in this budget. 150 seats, roughly $10,000, $12,000. Now, on that back wall, we could have bleachers like high schools do. Bleachers that fold up against the wall, 14 stories high. They come out on the floor. That's $60,000. We've opted for this program because we wanna keep it in the budget. And then at a later point in time, when Brian's making all kinds of money and doesn't know how to spend it, we could build the $60,000 bleachers, or we could go out and fundraise as part of those efforts from that committee. And then the $60,000 is there, and then we put in the bleachers. There are no frills in this, but there are no, you can look at the building. It's four walls, a ceiling, basketball hoops, a net and a floor. That's what's in that building. Brian has already priced out the cost of the nets, the cost of the bleachers, the cost of the goals, batting cages, indoor batting cages. $180,000 outfits that entire gym. Two floors. Keep remembering, we're getting two gyms, not one. High school-sized gyms, not middle-school-sized gyms, that were proposed in the other two proposals. So I hate to say it's a no-brainer, but this is, I always believe three strikes, you're out. If this gets voted down again, there will never be a rec center in the Town of Naples for the next 20 years. We all know that. So this is the last chance to get a rec center in the Town of Naples. And I believe for, I think it's 18 cents on the mill rate, and our goal is to get it down lower than that. This is only gonna cost 18 cents for 100,000 value on your house. Might cost somebody $50, $60 extra a year, maybe 100. I think the fundraising committee is gonna bring this building down. I think the fundraising committee is going to bring this building down even a lot less than that.
I thought you said that it's going to probably be a lot of this.
Well, this, no, I didn't say that. We're asking, we're asking the voters.
So, we're using tax dollars to do this?
Correct.
We'll ask questions later, let Jim finish up.
So, here's my final, so I think, I think the last piece of this. Why is it at the Legion and not at the property that we bought across from Down Hall? Well, first of all, I was the guy that was sitting up on that stage as chair of the select board convincing everyone to buy that property. Because at the time, that's where it was envisioned that the rec center was going to be. Unfortunately, the proposal to build it there came in at seven million dollars and you, the voters, voted it down. So, this select board tasked this work group, figure out a way to build it cheaper. The cheapest way to build this building is to put it at the Legion property because A, we own that property, B, there's parking already there, we just need to add to the parking. It ties in with the sports fields that are already there, so it makes sense to have a rec center where your recreation fields are versus building it here. Now, if anyone is concerned that taxpayers wasted two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to build that building, I know at least three people that will reimburse the town for the two hundred and eighty-five thousand plus the interest you paid over the last two years because that property today is now worth four hundred.
So, it's going to be sold?
I, I.
Hold up.
So, I was the one who thought that that rec center was going to go there, it made sense. I was the one that helped convince people to buy that property. I still think it's an excellent purchase for the town of Naples for what we got it for. No way savings, sold it to us for a song at that time. But unfortunately, the voters voted it down. So, we were tasked to find another location and that's what we did. And it's half the price for two gyms. All right, that was my sort, that was my section.
I just wanted to add that we also, the town of Naples also purchased the property at the Legion, right? So, that was also purchased and owned by the town. So, both were investments made by the town for either recreation or whatever is the best use of that space.
Brian, before we get into questions, do you have anybody else that's going to speak?
I actually want to introduce everybody to somebody. You can take that mic over there if you want. You can speak to the people, however you want. Jim doesn't follow the rules, whatever it is. I'm going to talk to you. So, anyways, I just wanted to, before JoJo says anything, I want to ask JoJo a question. JoJo, in two thousand thirteen, when I made that call to Naples about the gym, how old were you?
Oh, gosh, I was seven.
Seven. So, at least from now, from then until now, when JoJo is doing the website, web design, website work, and doing a lot of marketing with that marketing group that's going to be, that's now doing marketing and going to be doing some fundraising, JoJo's a big part of that from the time he was seven till now, couldn't go play basketball in that gym. And anyways, sorry. Go ahead, JoJo.
All right. I had nothing planned, you just put me on the spot here. But, so, let's look at this picture here, I guess. That guy on the right, I don't know if you know him, his name's Cooper Flag. He's a little, he's actually, he's younger than me. I took that picture. And then that nice, beautiful facility right next to it, that's Jim's. I was there beginning of summer, okay? I didn't even know it was his facility. I filmed the kid for two games, those two games, and I have been working on like social media marketing for basketball mostly. And I went to that gym, filmed this kid for two games, made three videos. Those videos got two million views in total. That equates to about two thousand dollars from two games. Now imagine if we had tournaments weekly where there's fifty-plus games that could happen. The amount of viewership and financial ability that a gym space can bring to their town is, it's a lot bigger than a lot of people can imagine. Bigger than just like rec programs because I've been working through, I know, kind of young for this committee, but I've been working on social media. I grew up in the social media age, which a lot of people don't necessarily know, especially in Naples. I'll give you a break, but I can also know that with this space, it can, it can be self-sustaining within twelve, twelve months. So, I just know how important it is and I really, really hope that this can get passed because I know how big it would be for the town, the schools, the kids, the future and everything. So, that's all I have.
And one other person that I think really should have, speak to us tonight is Chelsea. Chelsea, who loves, loves public speaking. And if you all saw her on the news before Father Fest, she's, come on. But no, Chelsea, if you've been to one of any of the recent events, especially the events that are more geared towards everybody and seeing the big change in events in this town, Chelsea's the head of that committee. She's, she has a lot of great ideas and she's also part of this committee that's out there promoting and want to be helping us raise funds. And I just wanted to hear, I just wanted you to hear a little bit from Chelsea before we open it up to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to you guys for allowing us the opportunity to serve and volunteer and maybe dream a little, so. So, I was not a part of previous gym committees, really was not much on my radar day-to-day. Hello. Not really on my radar day-to-day, but now it very much is so. I'm laying awake, dreaming, thinking, pretty much trying to figure out a way to make this happen. I am so nervous. I hate this. But I think that there's something really special about this committee. I don't know who was on previous committees, but this committee feels energetic, there's a spark, there is a vibrancy and an urgency and a big imagination. And I think that the resources and the uniqueness of this committee is really the biggest tool that we have. So, I think one of, one of the things I want to lean into is also something that JoJo was talking about and Brian, which was the goalpost of this being funded with grants and sponsorships and fundraising. There's members on this committee that have great resources, friends in high places, and those are going to be the first places that we go. Also, the story and the purpose of this building, it's not a building, it's not a gym, it's a complex, it's a collective, it's a compilation, it's a Naples mixtape, it's whatever you want it to be. You are a co-creator in this, you have ownership of this. It's owned and operated by Naples. It will bring in jobs and economy and economic possibility. And when you own something, you have freedom. And when you have freedom, you have imagination and room to play. And I think that it's really going to be something that, what is it that you need in your life? What is your purpose and your passion? And this is going to be a place of support, not Scrooge. It's going to be a resource for you if you have a son. And it's not just, you know, football or soccer or basketball or lacrosse or pickleball, but if you have a son who has an instrument, you don't know where to book him to play and you have no space in your home, like, what if this is a place that could provide that for you? What if, what if this is a place that could provide you to make things in your life a reality? So, and then also, by being co-creators, it provides a vibrant future. And that's what it's meant by the health is wealth, right? The health factor of it is also wealth, like what JoJo was saying, like, his two videos created wealth, right? He's in a different position now than he was three years ago and he's able to literally be an entrepreneur with what he's done by being in a complex or a gym. That's how this started and it's an inspiration and we're lucky to have that asset. And there's other people in our, in our town that we don't understand the level of talent, like our neighbor Darrell Lynn, she's also an influencer. She's an incredible photographer, but she's going to Bar Harbor, you know, to all of Martha Stewart's favorite fans and doing photo, like photo teaching and all of this, all these workshops that people pay top dollar for. What if that was down the street in Naples? And she wants it to be, you know? So, I think that there's a lot here that outside of just basketball, outside of just, is there going to be a kitchen? It can be a studio, it can be a film space, it can be a podcast, it can be so many different things. But again, back to the fundraising, we're going to have impact events and initiatives and partnerships to create the revenue. And as we go along, we're going to have a temperature check, like full transparency, where are we on the thermometer scale? Where is it at? Okay, they said this, where are we at? And I don't know where that will be, but it'll be somewhere central, obviously on the website as well. But I think that that's important, to follow the story along. This is a story, this is an opportunity. And yeah, I think, I think we would be regretful to not lean into the talent that we have right now, the passion that we have right now, the youth that we have right now, the energy. You know, not, not everybody is as, you know, they don't have as much energy as I think some of the members of this committee, but we're going to, we're going to do the elbow grease and we're going to do as much as we can to make it so that it is funded with not your tax dollars, but other lucrative, creative ways that I think that maybe some people in this room like can't even wrap their, like, two monster ideas that I have in 2026 smash and could bring in a lot of money. And those two events alone, I think, will be very surprising. So, expand your thinking, lean into possibility and hope and optimism. So, that would be my, my pitch.
You're all set with speakers? Okay, we'll open it up now to questions and without blurting from the audience, please come to the microphone so we can all hear you.
Hi, I don't have a question, but I would like to add to the speakers. My name is Miriam Remar and I live at mine, Goodrich Drive, Naples, with my husband Harold Millman. I have been a part of the Naples Recreation Exercise Classes since 2008. And I can't believe that seventeen years later, I still work out there every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday morning. There have been many ongoing changes in that program, but the one constant is our awesome leader and teacher, Pauline Webb, who many of you know. She has come up with challenging and creative routines for us over these years, continually changing the expectations and helping the ante in order to accommodate newest members to the group and old timers like me. Our group ranges in age from our fifties to even the nineties. Some of our participants have had their ninetieth birthday, believe it or not. These exercise classes help keep us fit, active, and upright. Many mornings, it's difficult for me to get up early and go to classes, but I always feel more ready for the day after the physically stimulating routines and after checking in with longtime classmates and newer friends too in that group. The greatest asset for our exercise program in Naples is clearly our leader, Pauline Webb. As I said earlier, there have been many ongoing changes that the exercise program has had to endure. In 2008, my first year as a seasonal Naples resident, our program was held in the town hall in the gym portion of that building. There were times when we were working out there with buckets on the floor due to the leaking roof. Also, on occasion, classes were canceled because of work being done on that same roof. During these times, we moved our classes to the lawn outside so we could continue our workout. Then there was youth summer camp, which needed the same space that we were in, they needed the gym. Our program then had to move from one of the schools during the summer months, depending on which school was available. The exercise program has been at Crooked River School, Song and Lock School for the elementary schools, and we've also been in the middle school too, where classes were held in the gym and in the cafeteria some years. And when the exercise program had to move, all of our exercise equipment too had to move. Large exercise balls, floor mats, weights, bands, all this equipment moved with us each and every time we had to go to a new space. Pauline and others moved the bulk of this equipment while each participant took what we could in order to get that job done. I can remember trying to cram my large ball into my small trunk only to find it wouldn't fit, if you can imagine. Then I had to put it in the backseat and found I couldn't see out of my rearview mirror while we went to the new exercise place. This wasn't safe. The town gym and the school buildings worked for many years until that gym was declared unsafe, as many of you know. Once again, the exercise program had to move and this time it was in the Grange Hall, where it is now. In fact, we exercised there this morning. We are grateful for that space, but it is a problematic situation. One reason for this is the room size is limited. During these past months, there have been as many as twenty-five people in our classes. There's barely enough room to put all the exercise mats on the floor and certainly not enough space to move freely as we bounce the big balls and we move to different exercise routines. Also, in addition, this is an exercise program for seniors. Our classes at the Grange Hall are held up a flight of pretty steep and it feels like rickety stairs. Some of our seniors have mobility issues and can't make it up that flight of stairs. They've had to cancel and drop out of the program. For many of us in our seventies and eighties, including me, lugging the exercise bag up that flight of stairs is a workout before we even get to the workout. So, you can imagine how that feels. We are grateful to have an exercise program for seniors in Naples with such an outstanding leader. Now, we need a permanent home for that program. We have put up with leaks, moving from place to place to place, making do in a variety of challenging situations, and it's time for change. We seniors benefit from this program. It helps us continue to be physically active, healthy, socially connected, and vibrant participants in our lives and in our community. Please support this proposal for a new, permanent recreation building so that all of our friends and neighbors have a safe and functional location for exercise, social connection, and overall well-being in our community. Thank you for listening.
I'm in. I think the first two committees have been short-changed. Their initial direction on what to get into was different from this one. The first one had to build a town office with it, therefore the price went up. Nobody was willing to pay that kind of money. I agree. The second one tried to put it on that building, but there's a rule that it has to fit with the character of the village. And that's where it would run the cost up. That rule's going to go away because it's somebody's opinion. We can't have rules with opinions tied to them. You could have built this building on that place, yeah, you'd have had to do some landscaping one thing or another, but it wouldn't fit in. I don't mind it being at the Legion, but it can go at the Legion, but it can't go up here because it don't fit with the character. I don't think the character at the Legion is any damn different than the one up on the causeway. I don't think the character at the Legion is any damn different than the one up on the Causeway. That opinion's got to go away. I agree with the situation here. We need the gym. There's been all kinds of reasons why it couldn't have been taking place, one thing or another. Doesn't matter, but where we are today, we need the gym. When we bought the land from the Legion, there's an agreement about two rows of parking. We got to make sure that we maintain that agreement. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Paul Trudy, athletic administrator in this district. The first thing I would like to say is thank you to all of you that have put in the work on this project. Thank you to Brian for his leadership. Although my children are, have grown up and some have gone away, I feel sad that they perhaps may miss this opportunity as a child and a young adult that was very involved in athletics and activities. But I know that they would be super excited, as I am, at the possibilities that this holds for the future. I just want to speak on behalf of organizing and being the person in charge of the facilities at our high school and our middle school. We do not have enough space and enough hours in a day to accommodate all the requests that we get and for all of the use of our buildings. This opportunity is a game changer from our toddlers all the way up to our seniors. And again, for our seniors, I've been here for approximately 20 years. We used to have walkers in our building. We used to have step aerobics in our gym. We used to be able to open up our weight room facility. But because of the burden of requests and everybody who wants to be in our facilities, it's just not possible to host all of the activities that we would like to. I think this facility again is a game changer. I also look at this facility economically for our town and our community. And I'm very excited at the opportunities to be able to bring others from other towns and cities to our community, which is certainly going to be a benefit to our local establishments, whether it's convenience stores, restaurants, or whatever it may be. I also get excited and I feel very strongly about the idea of stewardship. And stewardship is simply leaving a place in a better space after you depart. And I think this is the opportunity for us to do this for generations to come. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
No.
Is there somebody in front?
No. I thought you was just going to stand up and start yelling.
No, 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 no.
Pull it down, the micro down.
I just said you thought I forgot, didn't you? But here I am. I wasn't able to go to the last meeting, so probably all these questions were asked at the time. But I would like, oh, by the way, my name is Priscilla and I think everybody knows who I am, but that's okay. It was probably asked, but I'm going to ask anyway. You're talking about Brian having all kinds of money he's not going to know what to do with. Are you charging for every time you have a volleyball? Or every time the lady is out in there doing her exercise? Where is this money coming from?
And Brian's going to answer that question.
Now, you want me to give you other questions?
No, no, that's fine. Well, actually, there is another question.
Okay.
My other question is, goes way back to the beginning. How many bathrooms are you putting into this facility?
Six.
Six? You're not putting in six bathrooms.
Can you go to that slide? I think it's a little further along, maybe a couple more. Right there, yeah.
There's six bathrooms? For what?
I'm going to go on a limb and say go to the bathroom, but I'm just guessing. They act as changing rooms too.
Yeah, but...
Brian, I'll answer the bathroom questions if you want to answer the next one.
Yeah, 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 good.
Or actually the last one, I should say.
Yeah. You want to go first, Ted?
Sure. Priscilla, I go to these facilities by Sunzer into sports and recreation. I go to, there's two of them in soccer that I go to. One of them's in Portland tonight. But when you have basketball tournaments and there's four teams playing, I'm not sure that six bathrooms is enough because they get used a lot.
I just don't...
That's only six stalls, Priscilla.
Yeah, but you're talking about stalls, changing rooms.
But when they have a tournament and four teams are playing with the parents and the grandparents that are there watching, there's close to 200 people on the floor at a time.
Okay, I understand that. But what I'm saying is now you're saying, something just said it's a changing room. Now, to me, a changing room, when I was in school, you had a curtain and you had a bench and you sat down and you changed your clothes. Now you're saying bathrooms.
I think what Jim was saying was is a bathroom stall could be used to change your clothes if you had to.
But six bathrooms, okay.
They're needed, Priscilla. I, like I said, I go to these places quite a lot in the wintertime and the bathrooms are busy.
But how much does it cost to put a bathroom in?
I don't know that answer.
No, no, but I, okay, go ahead.
To the bathroom question too, is I think Kathy could speak to that with the capacity that we have. Like that's what we have to have. If we wanted to try to cut that corner, that's not one we'd be allowed to cut. You have to have X amount of bathrooms and X amount of ADA bathrooms for your, the number of people that is in there. So even if we were tasked with finding, which we are constantly trying to find ways to be more responsible, cutting the bathrooms for that size of the building is not an option we have. But to answer that first question, that's actually a great question. And I probably did a poor job of explaining it. So basically, right now, we have recreation programs and we have a lot of recreation programs, mostly for kids and parents pay, but the costs continue to go up and continue to go up.
Excuse me, but what do you mean the parents pay?
Parents do pay and so they do pay.
To come in to watch the children play?
No, they pay to register them to play. So they pay for the cost of equipment and uniforms and those types of things. And officials to officiate their games and umpires and whatnot. So they do pay a little bit, but the cost of everything keeps going up. So one of the things we've done recently is, against my better judgment at first, but now it's been amazing, is we use sponsors to help pay for the uniforms. So we're getting sponsors for all of our, you know, and they modestly put their name on their uniform and they're paying the cost of the uniforms to help keep the price down. We want to always keep the price down or nothing in some cases. We run some programs that cost nothing for kids or adults that don't have that money. So and one way to do that is by using this facility to make money, right? So we run a basketball tournament or a cornhole tournament, which I've been bugged about. Pickleball tournaments or the money we get from our pickleball players. These, you know, to rent the space out for conventions. That type of money helps support and pay for the building as well as the other programs.
You still didn't answer my question. Are you charging this lady who is going in to play, to do her exercises? Are you charging her every Monday, Wednesday and Friday to come in there and use that facility?
She pays a very low modest fee to do that now. But we want to avoid that going up. We want to use this to help pay for that and keep that price down. So yes, we take the monies. So yes, the answer is most of these programs, they do pay. That's part of the revenue that we're already bringing in. Okay. I guess it was a lot easier than I thought.
I know there's another speaker. In fact, she's standing up back there. But Priscilla, I'm going to take a five-minute bathroom break right now.
Why are you running, Ted? I don't really know who to address here. I'm going to try to split the difference. I'm Erin Plummer. I'm a Naples resident. I've lived here since 2007 and have raised our family in Naples. And I think first, I really appreciate in every iteration, all the time and energy, enthusiasm, the highs and the lows of trying to solve this problem. And I feel like the time is now. And so I think we're talking about a gym and sort of the void of a gym, but it's really symbolic about building communities through sport and recreation and lessons and the, what you can get out of that. And that, I think Paul said it, from toddlers up to your seniors, that's everybody in the community. And so, you know, we've, our boys are 17 and 16 now and they've never had a gym in our town that we live in, that we've lived in their entire lives. Hasn't existed. I've coached youth sports since my husband and I, since they were in T-ball, basketball, you name it. We were at Songalox Gym. There was maybe 20 seats jammed into the sideline, basically in bounds. This is a game-changing opportunity for our town, for the people that live here and for all the people that are going to come here to experience this. I think we should honor everything that's been done to this point and really just get this done to the finish line. This is a really, really big deal for our town and it's generational. I think, you know, the people have spoken and I think the people have been heard in terms of what we were looking at in terms of a cost and what it will cost today and the pledge that this group, this task force has said, we are capping it. We are going to be gritty. We're going to get sponsorships, funding, grants. That's a tremendous amount of effort that I don't think has sort of been given enough attention. That is a huge feat. There are people that do that professionally, nonstop, around the clock. And to have people volunteering to do that, to make this happen for our town is, it's incredible. So thank you for that. It will never be less expensive than it is today. It would have been cheaper five years ago, 10 years ago. This iteration needs to happen. It needs to happen for all of our kids and everyone, everyone in our town and the people that are going to come to enjoy it for years to come. I think it's been really creative, what we've done to look at revenue generation. I would just say the primary purpose is for the citizens and the town of Naples, all ages. A lot of different ways we can use this space. So I just appreciate everyone's work and it's, let's do this. Let's get it on the ballot. Let's get a building built and start using it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ellen Fogg and I'm 110% behind a new rec building. We've needed it for years. People haven't been able to use a gymnasium for all this time. It's just going to help our families. It's a good thing for the children to have healthy things to do. It's good for all of us, from babies to seniors, to have activities to do and places to come together as a community. Of course, I would like to see it right in the middle of town because I think we need the parking and all the other things that would bring to us if we had that piece of land, if we put it over on that piece of land or on the backside of the Beegan property, which is very level. I know that's probably being considered also through the committee who's done a fabulous job. And they've just looked at this in a different way by using this type of a building and giving us twice as much. I want to make sure we've got all the facilities that we need, that we have the kitchen, because the kitchen is going to be critical in renting out this building and also to making more money. And for us as townspeople in using this facility, whether we're paying anything or a little bit for it, other people are probably going to be paying a good deal to use these facilities. And we need to have a kitchen. We need to have great bleachers. I'm just wondering where, if we don't need a little more space, because where are the changing rooms for the, for the teams? Where are, I see one community room. I don't know where the kitchen would be going. And it seems like we ought to have more than one conference room for all these other things. If the, if the two gyms are in use, where would you, where would you use your, for your exercise class? Which is a little smaller, but just as important to those of us who would come to an exercise, a yoga class, those types of things. I think this is a fabulous opportunity for us and we need to have it big enough. And I'm glad to hear that they at least went from $3 million to $3.5. And I can tell that they obviously have got a plan to come up with some sponsorship. And until the town says yes to this program, we cannot go for grants. And that's a big, that's a big deal. And I really would urge you all to support this program, whether it's in the middle of town, where I'd really like it to be, accessible to the beach, parking for the Village Green and so on, and for the Causeway businesses. If it's over at the Leisure Field, it's going to be more handy for me. So all good there. But I do think that probably some more trees need to come down and there needs to be plenty of parking. And the parking spaces don't need to be cramped up to get more in. Okay? I have a small car now, but I do like to have my space where I park. But I just would urge everybody to support this and let's get what we need. And if we need to expand the project before it's finished, this front building, feels like this front building needs to be a little bigger. But if we're starting with a program, is this prefab building that is what this all turns on anyways? But I think that there's going to be room for some smaller breakouts. And the kitchen, maybe Brian can tell us where that kitchen was, is proposed. And, but truly, we need to think about what do we, what are we going to use this building for? And are we going to build a building and then have to do additions? Or do we maybe make it a little bit bigger right, right now in the main design? But I think it's great. I think the committee's done a good job and the other committees had done a really good job, but it was more than what the town wanted to spend money on. It was more than the town wanted to even replace. So, but this is, this is something we need and we need it now. So I thank everybody for the work that they've done on it.
I hate microphones and speaking in public, just FYI. So I actually...
So tell us who you are.
I'm Darcy and I'm a Naples resident, born and brought up here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Nice to see you. Sorry that Priscilla scared you earlier. So I have kind of a different take on rec programs versus community centers. I have a little background in the community center piece. So my question is, is why focus on rec first and not community? Meaning there are a lot of people that do not use a recreation facility. I'm not saying that there's not a lot, but there are those in our community that do not. And is there plans for this becoming a community center slash recreation department so that every community member's needs are met who are going to be paying taxes on this? We also have an aged population. We're hoping that maybe some of this would bring in younger families, I'm assuming, from other places. So is there space in this particular area for adjoining community center itself to address those populations that are not doing sports? And also, has this been taken into consideration for the 10, 15, 20-year plans as our communities start to expand towards Portland or Portland expands towards us? Is there room for additional expansion down the road? I'm not sure why this base moved from Centertown into the Legion. Unfortunately, I work a lot, so I haven't been able to attend any meetings sadly. And also I'd like to know what kind of financial support there is that's going to help for offsetting taxpayers' costs, particularly through rural development grants. I understand that those things are not accessible until we have a yes or a no, but there should be a list of potential amounts that people can access to know what it would bring their cost down to. So I'm not sure who should answer any of those questions, but have any of those things been taken into consideration?
Brian?
The, the first part of your question is, absolutely, the, the plan is to do what we can for the most amount of residents possible. It's one of the reasons we went with the flooring we went with. Like I said before, it's not just a pickleball court or a basketball court. That, that surface can be used for all kinds of activities. A section of that can be used for what, you know, for whatever one. When I came to this position, when I came to this town in this position, I had real two big goals. It was like, one was we need more facilities, not just this facility. We need more facilities. I may not make, get more, but we're gonna do the best we can. But another one was, we need more programming for kids, for people, for human beings, after they leave the sixth grade. Because we have kindergarten, actually now, pre-K to sixth grade locked up. Right? So, we're trying to do, it, it, the, right, it moves slowly sometimes. We're, that's, that, those are our goals. So, this facility will allow playgroup, which is not, you know, not a sport. This facility will, will allow us to, to, to do lots of things that aren't necessarily athletically inclined. I'd like to have a swimming pool. I'd like to have a lot of things. We were tasked with keeping that cost down. Maybe proof of concept, maybe doing this can show people and can, and can be so good for our community that that next step will, will happen, because I don't think it ends here. I, I think a community center is an amazing idea. I think of larger meeting spaces and all of those classrooms, all of those things are great. We have, I think this committee, and what they have a task to do, is working groups, sorry, and what their task to do is really had been about finding a cost-effective way to make it happen. Because that first building was gonna take care of all of those issues, but it was seventeen million dollars, and people spoke loud and clear that that wasn't gonna work. So, this is where, I think this is where we're gonna start, but I share, and I know a lot of members of the working group and the committee and the people, share that, those same views you do. This is where we're gonna start. The other questions were concerning the-
Financial, and also expansion, future expansion. If you're putting this space over by the Legion, is there an actual enough space to keep and maintain the outside facilities that are already there for folks that are playing baseball or Little League? I've spent a long time with Bleacher Butt in this community for my own children. But outdoor is also equally as important as indoor.
Yeah.
And is there going to be enough space for future expansion? Is there like a, a tier process of, this is the first set, then this is the second set, this is the third set? But I wanna make sure that there's enough property and parking for those things to happen. But also, again, it goes back to community, which means all people outside of sports-minded.
Yeah.
So, that's where I struggle with this as a taxpayer, but also as a person, because we have a huge amount of folks that are not sports-oriented, who will be paying money for this, and the frustration will go into them. The food pantry alone in Naples is a community-
Yeah.
-issue. And it should be something that's included. When you're talking about spending some money for this, there should be spaces involved in this particular development. I don't know what the whole big picture is, but I don't believe that it's intended for those types of long-term use, or to make it more community accessible to folks.
I, again, I agree wholeheartedly, right? I'm, I'm not just a sports guy. But I'll tell you, I hope that people who are not into athletics would love to go to an indoor carnival, in a space that's big enough to have an indoor carnival. I hope that those people, maybe, maybe are into boating, would love to go to a boat show, you know, that could be, that could now be, now there's a facility in Naples that's big enough to hold the boat show. I hope that they have a big event, that they like to rent the space at, at, at the Naples price, the lower Naples price, so they can bring their family in, and maybe do some bounce houses, or maybe do, you know, I, there's, there's endless types of things. I hope they wanna go to the concert or attend one of Chelsea's great events that are gonna be there, you know, and, and listen to some music. There's, there's more, it's more than just a sports facility. And so, as, as far as expansion goes, there is some room over there. Jim might be able to talk a little bit more to that. But there's, there's definitely room to, to expand, to take some more trees down, to expand. There's not as much as maybe, maybe we would like, but this is, or at the other property that folks are talking about either, to build this type of complex that you're talking about. But that doesn't mean it's not in the, in the cards, and that doesn't, you know, Naples is, is a small town, but it's a pretty powerful one, and I think we can get things done, and this is a really good first step. But I, I do, there's a large commitment on my part, and my staff, which is, right now, is currently sitting right in the front, to, to create lots of different opportunities that are beyond sports for kids from pre-K to sixth grade. You know, we've already expanded with what we can, but we, we need a facility to do more, so.
So, as far as the financial cost, are there additional grants, rural development, anything that's, anybody's looked into yet for offsetting the taxpayers' cost? Is the town willing to, I don't, I think the town still, do you guys do some HUD work somewhere? Housing? So, do we support any kind of low-income housing in this, in the town of Naples?
So, when, when we talk about this committee, the current committee, and the fundraising committee, I know that they are all pretty aggressive, and if there is any grants out there available, they'll certainly be going after them.
So, there is the community, the Community Development Block Grant that is also through HUD Housing. So, if there are things down the road that would be involved with any future low-income housing that could come into Naples, that would also allow for additional funding to come through on the other side of it, that would help do improvements like these, which do lower the taxes for the general population. But thank you.
This group is gonna do everything that they can to lower that tax bill rate.
And I would add that if you have, like, this is something that we've already spoken about, that particular grant, but if you or anybody else, I mean, it takes a community, right? It takes, we always hear it takes a village, like, if you or anybody else hears or sees anything or wants us to, wants to add to, you know, how we can make this better and do better, and, and reduce the tax burden, like, you can contact me, and I can filter that information to this working group. There's also even better than that. There's a website up. Is it up? It's up and running, called naplesrec.com. And there's, there's a way to communicate directly to that group on, on there. So, I think, let, if, if there's something you wanna ask about, or you think we should be looking into, share, please, by all means, share that information with this amazing group.
Hey, Brian, just out of context here, but you pointed to an individual over here, and a lot of heads in the crowd will look and say, "Who's he talking about?" You wanna introduce-
Alex, can you stand up? Alex Lingadis, a, oh, by the way, a, a member of the 2016 state championship basketball team at Lake Ridge High School. Alex was our camp director. He ran a summer camp this year for ninety kids per day at Songalock School. We averaged ninety kids per day, and Alex ran that summer camp very, very well. They had a great time. And, but there, just pointed, there was no AC.
We need more space.
To, to answer your question. So, my name is Craig Shakness. I live in Naples, have been a permanent resident since 2019, and here since 1996. And Lindsay and I co-chair, Lindsay Clements and I co-chair the committee, the work group that you're talking about. And we're certainly not experts on fundraising. I mean, we're laypeople in this area. So, as Brian said, I, I like to surround myself with, with good people and smart people, smarter than me, because that's how I learn. And I, and if you know people that can help us in this effort, you know, that will be greatly appreciated. And reach out to us through the naplesrec.com, www.naplesrec.com. And the message will get to Brian and to me, and if you have any questions about this. If you've got ideas, if you've got connections to people that we don't have connections to, we'll gladly take them. And we, we'd love to use your energy to help us, you know, make this a successful project. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Tombarelli. I'm the municipal planner for Naples. I am not a Naples resident. However, I'm very familiar with the town. I live in Gray. There's been a lot of change in players. There's a new town manager. I'm new to Naples. I've been here for about a year. But what we were tasked to do is to look for a location that this would work. I'm gonna answer some of the other questions over there. I'm gonna go back to the bathrooms. I know most of in this, most of us in this room, you had locker rooms. There are a lot of liability reasons why we don't wanna go down that path today. These are gender-neutral, single-use bathrooms for a reason. The number of fixtures are dictated by state plumbing code. So, we got input from the code enforcement officer, and that's why we landed on this bathroom configuration. A lot of people have asked about the expandability of the project, whether we were to locate on the two parcels adjacent to the town office or over by the Legion. The Legion parcel is about nine acres. About thirty-five percent of that is taken up with outdoor fields. Those will continue to be used there. The two parcels combined that the town owns in the village are about six to seven acres, depending on what information you look at. But that location would require more site work. Whatever comes down, when we look at the budget, whatever the select board decides to move forward to, this fundraising can make up that difference. And that is the goal, depending on how expensive it is. Since the time that you last voted, there have been some guidelines passed, design guidelines that you were speaking of. There's actually sixteen of them, standards. They're, or opinions. The sixteen standards apply in both the commercial and the village district, but the application of them is different because of what's around in the area. So, it's supposed to fit in with the surrounding area in the village, which is a little bit higher bar than in the commercial district. So, that is the reason why this committee looked at that particular lot. Either parcel would provide enough parking. But there are, there is a lot of thought that went into this with this group, and with the task that we were tasked, that's why we landed where we're at. As far as grant funding, I know the former manager did look into some USDA grant funding. In order to do that, you would have to have the kitchen, and it would have to be a warming center. So, these are, there's all these standards that have to be met. We've looked into the Alfond, Alfred, Alfond, I used to work, I used to work for St. Germain Community College. I should know the name of it. We looked into that funding. We've talked to Susan Collins. There are all sorts of grants, opportunities out there. As a planner in a different municipality and in Naples, I sit on the Community Block Development Grant Municipal Oversight Committee. Unfortunately, neither one of these parcels are designated census tracts that allow us to tap into that funding right now. Naples does have some census designated tracts now that they did not have last year or the year before, where you could potentially utilize that funding. May change again in the future, but right now, it's not an option for that particular block development grant. But we are looking at all of those possibilities for funding, anything we can do to offset the costs to the Naples taxpayers. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just have one more question.
You can go first.
I just wanna jump in. My, my one more question is, is this going to become an eyesore like all the boating places that are now across 302? Shame on you guys. Truly, shame, shame, shame. As a person who has grown up here, that's, I don't want another storage unit look or boating facility to detract from what used to be a really nice town.
So, my name is Tim Riley. I've been a resident of Naples for fifteen years, going on twenty years now. So, the question I have is, has anything been allocated for upgrading the intersection around the corner from this proposed facility? Are you gonna have kids darting across the road without stoplights or without crosswalks? Because that's a substantial cost right there, and I assume they'll be borne by the town.
Are you referring to what's being proposed?
Yeah.
So, I don't understand-
How are you, how are you gonna address the additional traffic at the corner?
On Route 11-
At Route 11.
So, the state's gonna change and put a light at Route 11 and 302 in 26, 27. The town has allocated 220 grand to upgrade that intersection, so that mirrors 35 and 302, and it's not just cables and poles.
Okay. One other quick question. Now that the lot, the lot behind the town hall is not being used, is that gonna be sold? Will that money be allocated to this project? Or is Naples now a real estate developer? How much did you spend on the land at the, the new lot?
Two sixty, two eighty-five.
So, we're into this almost three-quarters of a million dollars between the two lots that the taxpayers are finding-
What, what two lots are you referring to?
The lots behind town hall and the Legion.
I don't think, I'll, I'll speak to that. So, the Legion, I know, they only picked, the town only paid the Legion fifty-six thousand dollars, like fifteen years ago. Oh, God, I hate microphones.
So does Darcy.
Yeah, I know.
Darcy, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
So, like fifteen years ago, the Legion was in trouble and had tax issues. The town paid the Legion fifty-six thousand dollars or something for that land. So, there's no three-quarters of a million dollars. They spent two sixty, this is town, not us, we didn't spend this, the voters agreed to spend this. We spent two seventy-five for the Norway 3.1 acres and fifty-six thousand dollars for everything at the Legion that you currently see. I, I, for one, personally speaking, am not in favor of selling the Norway savings lot right now. I think, hang on one second, give me one second.
Is there another project?
That, that's where you're going. I don't know that. We don't have a five, 10-year plan for our facilities. We have eighteen million dollars worth of facilities. We don't have a current plan. A lot of them in dire need of maintenance, so we're trying to figure that out. I don't think we should sell that property before we figure that out. My opinion, it'll go to vote if it does.
It's almost even the line of a mic drop.
Anybody else?
All right, thank you. So, as I was just introduced, my name is Alex Lingadis. I don't currently live in Naples. I have lived in Naples. But one thing that is really cool about being from this area is I've had the benefit of using a lot of really great things, like the Causeway. You know, we have, you know, we have the River Queen. We have some of the greatest area, most beautiful landscapes you can have, and-
Minus the boats.
Minus the boats, fair enough. But I think one thing that we are missing in this community, where we literally, I truly think we have the best of the best, and I'm so thankful to be able to benefit from just living in this area, we don't have a gym. We don't have a place where people can gather. One question I heard, somebody asked about is other things we can do besides athletics. I mean, there's, you can have a board game night. I know it sounds silly. How many tables could we fit in that facility? You know what I mean? We could do card shows, you know? You can do car shows. You can do boat shows. So, there's such an opportunity to bring more of a lively atmosphere to this town, and not necessarily in a crazy, like, we don't need any more bars. We don't need any more restaurants, right? We don't need any more boats. We need a place where kids, adults, anybody can go and gather and get that sense of community, whether it's sports, whether it's board games, whether it's a, a, a community dinner. I mean, it's just, anytime you can do something like this in an area that already has everything, that already has all the amenities, like, if we can, if we can put together a chunk of change and make this happen, it's, this is something that we're gonna be reaping the benefits of for years and years. One small story I will share is, I used to coach AAU basketball, and I would drive fifty minutes to Saco to coach a team that had a kid from Gray, kid, two kids from Lake Region, kid from Saukabye Valley, and I think we had a kid from Poland as well. So, it's like, the need is in this area. I don't know how much my program paid to rent that gym out, but it wasn't cheap, you know? So, there's a, there's a need to make some money, and there's also a need just to have this area for our own health, our own wellness. So, thank you guys for having me. This is a great opportunity, and we, we, we need something like this in an area where we already have everything else. This is the last step. It really is, in my opinion. So, thank you. So thank you.
Anybody else have questions or comments under this public hearing for the Naples Recreation Seeing none. I'm going to take like a two-minute recess for anybody that wants to up and leave this piece of the meeting before we jump into the selectmen's meeting. Oh, good, nobody's going. So at this time, we'll open the select board meeting. And please rise and salute the flag that's over here in the right, go left, corner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and two republics from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anybody that's leaving, please do so so we can continue. Can the cameraman hand me okay? Item two, to review the meeting minutes of August 25, 2025. Motion and a second to accept.
I make motion to accept the meeting minutes of August 25, 2025.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
One of state.
One of state, four, zero, one. There will be no town manager's report tonight. What he told me basically is he's been working with this group on this project and all the figuring for it, but he'll have a probably lengthy report at our next meeting on September 22. I'll now open it to public participation. If there's anybody from the public that would like to speak, now's the time.
I just have a quick question. Where on the agenda is the select board voting to?
8A. Oh, 8A, I'm sorry.
Oh, the draft warrant, 8A, okay.
Anybody else for public participation? Go ahead.
Again, my name is Tim Riley. So I live on Basswood Road in Naples, on the Crooked River. And we came to the meeting a couple meetings ago, and we had questions about, there's rumors that the contractors who did the work haven't been paid up there, and the work hasn't been finished. And our favorite swimming hole is now a sand pit. And the town said, they sold us, we're going to keep all the granite blocks that come out of that, and we're going to leave them on site and use them in the landscaping. And now all those blocks are gone somewhere. They've all disappeared out of there. When are they coming back?
Randy, you want to dress up?
Yeah, sure. So the granite blocks were moved over behind the town garage, mostly for safekeeping and to get them kind of out of the way of some of the other activities that were going on there. Ken Norton has been working with P&amp;K and some other contractors on getting a quote to bring them back, do a granite wall, and then also a picnic table. And then I believe we've also filed for the DEP. Have we done that yet, Kathy?
We haven't filed for a PBR yet.
Okay.
But that's part of the process.
Yeah.
Permit by rule, sorry. The DEP permit by rule.
Yeah, so it's actually ongoing.
So we've got a huge environmental problem up there. The town accepted a report that said water doesn't run downhill for more than 300 feet. The whole river has dropped by more than three and a half feet. I live right on the river. I can see 10 feet of bank across from us now that all used to be water. And you can walk across that river in a dozen places now. And we used to walk out every morning, and we'd see 15, 20 ducks on the river. Now there's not one duck on the river. We've been keeping track of the temperature of the water in the river, and it's gone up to almost 80 degrees during the height of the summer. The rocks heat up, and they transmit that to the water, and it's killed off all the small fish, and that's the reason the ducks haven't been back. So now we've got environmental problems there. And we have that two-acre wetlands just up from the dam that's drained because of the difference in elevation of the river. So that needs to be addressed, because that used to have hawks in there, used to have a pair of eagles living in there, had river otters in there, and they're all gone now. Even the beavers are gone. Now the endangered bats that were down at the dam, they've disappeared because of the work that was done down there. And those are environmentally protected, as is the eagles who used to use that wetlands area. And if you go through the Jugtown Forest and look at the streams on the side of the road up there, they're all down to just this little stagnant water now because the river's dropped three feet, and the water, of course, runs downhill. And I'm wondering what the town's going to do about it now that's, how are you going to repair this problem?
So I'll respond on my opinion, and not to start an argument, just facts. Not only is the Crooked River low, we had a very dry summer, as we all know. It wasn't like we had in April and May with nine weeks of rain. But Long Lake typically doesn't drop, start dropping until about middle September to the first of October. And Long Lake itself is about three feet low also. Anybody in the audience that lives on the lake knows exactly what I'm talking about.
Well, my concern is one of my neighbors, the water in their well went dry, and they haven't been able to use that house during the holidays. They had to leave their house because they don't have water. So she came to town neighbors and said, there's a problem here. And they said, okay, go out, hire a well pump, and have them come in, take a look at the well, and tell us that the well's fine, and that it's a problem with the elevation of the water. And she did that, spent $2,500, brought the bill to the town, and never received a payment from the town or reimbursement for all the time she's put in, including replacing the well pump, because when it ran dry, it ran continuously. It burned out the pump, which was another $3,000. But she submitted all those bills to the town, and the town hasn't paid her yet. And we gave her her number at the last meeting when we were down here.
I don't have any bills from her, so I don't know where these are. So it's not that we haven't paid them. I'm not even aware of having a bill.
No one's returned her call. She's called, and we gave you her phone number to make sure.
If she's called me, I've returned her phone call.
Okay, Gary, do you have a number?
They blew it off, is what happened. The town blew it off, first time. Won't get blown right off. That's why you got no bill. They deliberately said they would not take care of it.
Okay, so I guess at this point, I appreciate your comments, but can we ask her to come in and see the town manager and bring the information with her?
She saw the previous town manager, but now you've got a new manager, of course.
She's not a full-time resident. She lives in Jersey.
Well, and she needs to contact the town manager.
Which she did, and they just blew it.
Yeah, but we're talking about, we're talking about a different person now.
Right, you're right. Yeah. I'll let her know.
Yeah, but this should be a priority for the town, because you've taken away this person's residence. Because under the state building code, if you don't have water, you don't have an occupancy permit. So you've taken, that's part of, that's part of, I see, international building code was the town approved.
You don't have to have water, you don't have to have electricity.
You do. You can check the town if you see, because the town approved IBC for two years.
So the town manager has that noted, and he'll be waiting for a phone call from the lady that you're talking about. Thank you. Anything else?
I have a question. Are you welcome?
No, I just want to know what we're going to do about the problem out there. All the fish in the river have died off because of the heat of the water. So you can restart that river with trout? Because that's what this was all about.
That's a question for the biologist that came to us with this plan.
Well, the people from the Army Corps of Engineers were fired, so they're no longer available. The guy from the town, from the state, I don't know whatever happened to him. He should come back and answer all those questions, because there were a dozen, notice we put in a letter to you guys about, from a biologist, about what would happen if they took that dam out, about the heat of the water in the river, the fact that water continues to run downhill after 300 feet, which was in a report that you guys accepted.
And also your comment about the river reaching 81 degrees. Long Lake also didn't this year. In fact, we reached 83. It's been a very warm summer, very dry, all around, not just the Crooked River, but
So there's no answer to the question?
So the question you're proposing about the environmental issues.
Is that we hire wetland biologists to come in and do a study what they did out there so it doesn't happen if someone else in the community may.
And we can reach out to Trout's Unlimited that proposed this also and see what they think.
They haven't paid for the work out there. They haven't paid for the landscaping. The landscaping was supposed to be done, including a 10-year plan of removing invasive species along the side of the river there.
Everything's noted as to what you said, and we'll try to get you some answers.
We have a lot of pendulums.
We do, yeah.
So who do I contact to get an update on this?
The town manager will be reaching out to the individuals to get answers. You've got to give him some time. I mean, it ain't going to happen overnight.
So when is the landscaping going to be done down at the dam? They were going to submit a plan to us for the neighborhood to take a look at and approve?
There was already, I'm new to this, but there was already a plan approved and a contract awarded in 2024. And essentially, all we've done is refresh the quotes. It's the same plan. There's a granite wall there with a picnic table, and that's what we have to get the DEP permit on before we can actually do any work.
And where's the $25,000?
TU has it. Trout's Unlimited still has the money.
Why is that Naples signed the permit for this? Naples is on the hook for this.
What's that?
Naples signed the permit for this work. The town personally signed for this work, the building permit for this work with the state.
Trout's Unlimited is holding the funds for that. When the work's completed, they will pay for it.
Back to the microphone that I so resent. Just a real quick question. Couple years ago, we were talking about having Lambs Mills tarred. They're supposed to rework the roads, and then that didn't happen. Instead, we got a nice strike down the middle of the road, which I was totally entertained by, because I'd never seen one in 25 years that I've been up there. So I'm just wondering, now there's some ditching going on, is there an intent to fix that road?
Randy can answer to that, but what I was told by the maintenance director is all paving is going to be done in the spring this year.
Okay.
But I'm not sure how much of Lambs Mills is involved with that.
I'm sorry, you said that in the spring, what?
That's when the paving will happen in Naples.
So there's an intention.
Instead of in the fall, they're going to do it in the spring.
Okay.
But I don't know how much of Lambs Mills is involved in that plan. I'm not sure of that.
Would it start from the 302 area and work its way up, or would it start from the backside and work its way down?
I would assume because they're doing the ditching on the 302 end, that's where they would start.
Assumptions.
It is an assumption, yeah. But someone that did road work for 28 years, that's typically how it works.
Okay. So, and one just quick comment on the whole ditching thing. It's getting kind of dangerous. There's very little spaces for people to actually pull off the side of the road in the event of an emergency. I know the theory behind it, but it's becoming a little problematic, I think, for a lot of folks. I'm just thinking, that road itself is very dangerous if you're not paying attention to it in the winter when it's icy. I understand when we had a lot of snow, that was a great idea, dump the snow in there. But now that we're not getting that much snow, now it's just an arena for people to get hurt. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else under public participation? Seeing none. We'll skip over some stuff here because it doesn't pertain. So we're going to move to number 8A. Review of proposed ordinance amendments as recommended by the Ordinance Review Committee and Planning Board and draft warrant language. Kathy, you want to speak on this?
Sure, absolutely. Kathy Tomburelli, municipal planner. You guys should have in your packets the proposed changes. These work their way through the ordinance, ORC, the ordinance, not advisory, it was advisory, Review Committee. I came from an advisory committee before this. Review Committee, they worked their way through that. They started in the select board. If you remember, we came back several months ago in March or April with a list of things that we would like to work on. You guys narrowed that list down, and we stuck to that list. Section 16A, the E, the only change to shoreline zoning ordinance, basically echoes state language, and it gives the CEO, the code enforcement officer, a little bit more teeth on the ability to deny permits on lots with existing violations. It's as simple as that. It doesn't mean that he can't issue permits if it's something that needs to be done, like a septic system, for example, but it gives him the authority to deny permits if there are outstanding issues or enforcement issues that had already taken place, or fees that had been assessed and not paid. And it basically comes right out of the state statute. Can you tell me when you're ready for me to move on?
Any questions for Kathy on that one?
Wait, which one are you on? Naples shoreline?
Yes.
Out of all of them, I only have one question, so.
Sure, okay. Okay, so I'm not there yet. So just tell me when to stop. Section 200 Administration, same exact concept, only in the Naples Land Use Ordinance, to give the CEO authority to not issue permits in the event that there are outstanding or existing violations. Section 400, a new definition for building height. That whole thing came along with the cell phone project that came, and we started talking about what is height, what is the definition of height, and we recognized that we did not have one for that. So we've added a new definition in section 400 on page five of your handout. Section 504, zoning districts. This all came about starting with cell phone towers as well. And we did not tackle cell phone towers in this round. However, while we were working on this, the state passed a new statute that is going to require towns by June of 2027 to adopt new ordinance language. It's still working its way through rulemaking right now, but will require towns to allow 15 feet higher than the underlying zoning district for affordable housing projects. Currently in Naples, your maximum height is 55 feet. That means that you could have 70 feet in any zoning district in Naples. That's pretty high. So we proposed, we worked on language to limit it to 35, the ORC, in all zoning districts. We did get some feedback from the public concerning the village district, that perhaps 40 would be more appropriate if someone were want to put in a hotel or some type of development that was three stories in order to meet the village design guidelines for roofs and pitch and that type of thing, that 40 might be more appropriate in village. So the planning board is recommending the 40 feet for just the village district. And then if the 15 feet for affordable housing makes it through the rulemaking, that would be back up to 55, which is where we're at right now. The land in the village is pretty expensive for that use anyway. So we are recommending 40 feet in the village. And stop me if you have any questions.
What is that in stories?
And 35 feet in stories is about three stories. If you have to meet some sort of design standard for a roof, it'd be two stories, maybe with some dormers type of scenario.
So you're talking possibly three, three stories in the downtown? So you're talking possibly three, three stories in the downtown causeway?
In the village district, yes, potentially.
And Rex says only two stories, correct?
But it's 55 feet. That's why I think, it's at least 55 feet, which is, I think, where that part of the reason why it's that tall. Plus, you have steeples in the village as well. So we're actually reducing it substantially in the village district. Moving on to subdivision, and this is one that needs a lot more work still. We've got a lot of things to tackle, but we kind of got some of the lower-hanger fruit with just the various grammar and formatting errors. And then we're deleting references to Appendix C, which is pretty dated. I haven't seen subdivision plans that look like that, and that's at the end of your packet. Those are not engineered plans that you would see today. So we're just deleting all references to Appendix B and C. And we're leaving Appendix A, which is the road standard. We're going to look at those maybe the next round. We'll come up with a list of things that we would like to work on, and we'll present it to you before we move forward on that. So for the time being, just eliminating those Appendix C, which is very dated, as well as Appendix B, I should have said B in there too. And that is so reflected in the materials that that's deleted. New language to design standards related to water supply, both drinking and fire protection. I worked on with the fire chief and the ORC on this. That is important because, as has been noted in this meeting, fire ponds are running dry. So we're not, that's not going to be an option. It's not an option in most towns. It'll be cisterns or individual sprinkler systems or a combination thereof. The language for public water was left there because it's kind of a placeholder, but currently, we do not have public water in most areas for fire protection. But what we did is we separated it out into two distinct, we did drinking water, then fire protection, and a lot of the fire protection language is new. And like I said, I worked on that with the chief. It gives the ultimate authority to the fire department, though. They can propose a combination of fire protection measures, but it gives the ultimate authority to the chief. Because he might say, you know what? If you're building next to the fire department, you don't need to do that, for example. So we gave him the authority to review and approve the plans and make a recommendation to the planning board. Amendments, or a new section to allow for the phasing of subdivision developments. This has to do, this is related to performance guarantees. If someone wants to come in and build, say, a 15-lot subdivision, they would only have, they could phase it now. Right now, we don't have a provision for phasing. And that would allow them to only bond, let's say, the first five lots if they wanted to. They would only get building permits for the first five lots, but they would not have to submit as big of a performance guarantee. So how it works in the street, they would come in for a preliminary plan for the entire subdivision. They could get preliminary plan approval for the entire subdivision in the ordinances as they are today, but they would come in for final plan for only the lots that they're ready to bond. So that way, that would give the ability for them to not have to submit as big of a guarantee all at once. It also gives some security to developers when you're dealing with an economy that's uncertain, you know, and you don't know if it's going to be economically feasible to complete the subdivision in the time period that's required. A lot of towns utilize that provision. I copied the language from another town. It seems to work pretty well.
So would they have to come back to the planning board to ask to build on addition? Or are they just giving carte blanche from that point on?
They would have to come back for final approval on any subsequent phases. So they could, maybe they get enough capital on lots one through five. They might come back and say, we want to do phase two and three now. We have the money to do the performance guarantee. I think it also gives the town a little bit more assurance that they actually have the letter. Letter of credits expire and bonds can go away when someone goes out of business. It's a way to help them get the capital they need to finish the subdivision, at least get it started. And there are, there's language in the conditions of approval. For example, no building permits shall be issued in any phases until final approval is granted. So you would not give building permits for lots that are not on a completed road, for example. Is it a, is it a?
Should it be a show?
Sure, hold on, let me look at that. It could be May, they could say, they could say no. It gives them the, if it's a six-lot subdivision, do you really want to phase that? You know, so maybe it doesn't make sense to do it on a smaller subdivision. So it gives them, ultimately, the planning board, the authority to consider phasing of a subdivision. It's not going to happen a lot here, to be honest with you. You're not doing, you're doing mostly 12 to 15-lot subdivisions. You're not doing 25 or 30-lot subdivisions. But it could come into play, and it has been asked by a developer, do you have a provision for phasing? It's just a mechanism, not going to necessarily use it all the time.
Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought I saw a meeting or we had a discussion that for subdivisions, they have to build the road out completely first anyways, right? So they're not going to come in and build like 200 yards of road, put a house up? Like they have to build out the entire area first? Is that correct?
Phasing allows them to just build up to that first house, or the first five, whatever they bond for. They couldn't go beyond that. So we're not going to be issuing for lot 10 if you've only built a lot five.
That's what it was, okay. Thanks.
Let's see. Amendments to Section 1009, to give the planning staff authority to reduce performance guarantees with a set of criteria, that's on page 37. Sure. Yeah, she should come up to the mic.
So if they're only going to have permission to build up to whatever house they start with, how does that affect their, how does that affect their tax base? So they're only, their taxes are based off of the entire piece of property that they're going to be paying for that's not in effect? Or are they only paying for the things that have a structure put into place on it? So that their taxes on the whole piece of property, would that be divided?
They'd be paying for the lots, and this has come up in other towns. They'd be paying for the lots that have final approval on them, whether they're built or not. So if one through five has final approval, that would be the portion that they'd be taxed on. The rest would be remaining land with a preliminary plan approval on that land. Does that answer your question?
So they're only paying taxes, more taxes on the pieces of that particular parcel that has a house or road attached to it?
For the phase that's been final approved, with final approval. Is there any questions? I mean, that could be, preliminary plan gives vested rights to a certain degree, but it doesn't give 100% vested rights. So this, they would have vested rights if they have preliminary plan approval, that they're going to be able to get those lots. But in some cases, they may come back and say, you know what? We're not finishing this subdivision. We're going to leave that as remaining land. That's happened, the economy changes, shifts, they never finish it. They could come back 10 years from now. If they come back 10 years from now, they're starting from zero, from scratch, because you have a certain amount of time to finish a subdivision, or else you have to come back and start over. It's just a mechanism. It's very difficult. For example, a new subdivider, someone who's been building spec houses their entire life, now they want to subdivide a parcel. Banks look at him like, no way, Jose, are you going to be getting a bond for $750,000 to make all the improvements? So it just gives people a chance to start a phase, get it constructed, get their capital, finish subsequent phases. And I, and these are all things that I discussed with you earlier. They can all, anything that's uncomfortable or there's some rewording, we can push these off to the next referendum. We just worked on the things that we had mentioned. Back to page 37. You did not have a planner. And so all this is doing, and there's a lot of places in the ordinance where we're going to be shifting the responsibilities to the CEO, to the planner, or responsibilities that you, because you did not have a full-time planner, that was all on the planning board, to staff, just to make it. The goal of most of these is to facilitate it to be a little bit easier for the public. And if you need to go back to the planning board to reduce a performance guarantee, that's another meeting, another fee, another month that you're slowed down. And so I didn't really change the language for the criteria, except for I added 12A, which is an itemized cost estimate is provided by the project's consulting, main registered engineer for all remaining subdivision improvements. The rest of the language remained basically the same, except for to give the authority to the town planning staff or road commissioner to reduce that performance guarantee. So if you've got 90% of the project done, they come in with an estimate from any contractor or engineer, engineer USA, saying that they've completed 90% of the subdivision, here's an estimated cost, they can reduce that performance guarantee to that amount of the remaining elements of the project. I see questions, maybe? Okay. Let me just give you a chance to flip this over. New Section 101.3, Amendments to Previously Approved Subdivision Plans. We'll eventually probably echo that in site plan as well. It's very unclear, but you get a lot, in small towns like Naples, you get a lot of people that have a three-lot minor subdivision or a four-lot minor subdivision. Now they want to add an additional two or three lots. Now you're getting into major subdivision land. And so we wanted to make it really clear, if you come back and you're just, you're just making a minor change, you don't have to do preliminary plan and final plan again. If you're just changing a lot line, it seems onerous to have to fill out an application for pre-application and then come back to final, if you're just changing a lot line. But if you're adding additional lots or dwelling units, when you hit that fifth lot or dwelling unit, then you're going to be in a major subdivision. Same language for a major subdivision. If you're just doing a minor change, maybe a lot line, or you're changing the configuration of the open space, or whatever it is, you don't have to do the whole process and go to two or three months of planning board. So it's just to make it simpler and to make it clear what the expectations are for those amendments. I also added a number three to that one, limiting the scope of the review to the changes. So you're not reopening the whole subdivision again, because that subdivision was built under different standards. They may not be able to meet new standards with the existing subdivision. So we just want to limit it to the scope of the changes. And that's all that I have. And I put draft, I did put draft language for the warrant. And one thing that I did that was a little bit different than you've done in the past is I explained a little bit in the warrant language what those changes are for the folks that didn't get a chance to read the attachments. So it describes a little bit what they are without going into great detail.
Kathy, I got one question, sorry.
Sure.
That was probably the beginning where I was doing something else, my fault. Naples Shoreland Zoning Ordinance Amendment, page one, section E, procedure for administrative permits. Is the code enforcement the only person that issues permits? Or does the planning board issue permits once they sign the plan, thus considering the permit goes forward?
It depends, it depends on what it is. And if there's a land use table in the shoreland zoning ordinance that talks about, first of all, is it in limited residential, limited commercial, resource protection, or shore, or stream protection? And then what the change is. Most of them go through the code officer, but there are thresholds that would go to planning board. And most of the time, they're pulling a building permit and a shoreland zoning permit through the code officer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the planning board has already had the first public hearing on these changes?
They've had the public hearing for these changes, correct. And the only change that came out of that was the change in the height for the village. Their recommendation was to go to 40 instead of 35 for the village zoning district. Oh, there was a couple, there was other changes, I'm sorry. We did have input from the fire, what came to the planning board for the fire chief was a 15,000-gallon cistern, because that's what he had required on a couple of projects. But when I spoke with him again, he said the base should be 10,000. He can require more. So we changed the language from 15,000 to 10. And he also added a sentence that the responsibility for the initial fill of the cistern is the developer, not the fire department. Because sometimes they just don't have the capacity to do that. So those were a couple of changes. I'd already talked to him, it went to the ORC, but then I had the fine. When we finalized the language, I gave him another chance to look at it, and he had a couple of changes. And the planning board recommended as amended.
You make a motion for all five questions?
There's actually four more questions.
There's four.
There's four.
I got a lot of questions for that one. I make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance amendments for the warrant in November, as presented.
Motion and a second. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Five to.
Okay, now I make a motion to put to vote in November. Article one, do you favor that the town of Naples enters into a private-public partnership where the town of Naples agrees to provide the land, the future maintenance management of the facility after it's built, and to contribute half of the $3 million cost, spending $650,000 of the unfunded balance, $650,000 of the TIP fund, and raise by taxation $200,000 or the difference based on balances in the unfunded balance and TIP funds? The remainder of the cost would be raised by donations and grants through 501(c)(3).
Motion and a second.
Can you explain what that means?
Just like Freiberg, in my mind, that it's a private-public partnership. We, the town, agreed to give you the land, maintenance of the facility, management of the facility, all future costs associated with it, to run it, whatever. We'll give you 1.5 million out of the three, and by donations and funds and grants and whatever, the other one and a half million is raised through the 501(c)(3).
So they have to raise 1.5 million before they can build the building?
Well, you've got 1.5 out of it. I think you could start groundwork and stuff, if that's what the town voters want. But I mean, there's people.
Basically, you're killing the project.
I don't think so. There's people on Facebook that say they can raise the whole 3 million. Somebody from your committee on Facebook said that they can raise the entire 3 million. There's two votes that have already happened, and we're having discussions. I got a lot more questions before we let Jim chime in, I think.
What's that?
I said I have a lot more questions, I think, before we go back to public, the Select Board wants to discuss. There's been two votes for this project. We've already decided that. They've been pretty much down the middle. There's been no data that shows, to me anyways, I've never seen a document that says 1,000 people said it's too much money. I've never seen a source document that states that. So to tax the entire population to build this, I think, is the wrong answer. And I think, once we agree to spend the $3 million, the fundraising portion, though they'll probably try, will not gain as much money as they think they will. I hope they will, and I'm positive. I know somebody that said they want to donate 250,000. But besides that, I've got a ton of other questions. I think this process has been railroaded through a little bit. The Budget Committee met Thursday, no real notice or agenda on the question, and voted approval of seven up. They didn't have a question posed from us, but they voted on something. How that happens, I have no idea. I think this is completely backwards. We had a public hearing tonight. I had maybe 10 answers to the questions that were asked tonight. The Select Board should be in the know before the public is in the know, in my mind. There's no restrooms identified in that plan for outdoor activities. So people on the ball field have to go into the facility if it's open. So we're still going to have porta-potties on that property. That seems silly to me. That's the town well filling station from our town well. There's no plan on there for that, no drive-around area or traffic pose, a pad to pour water for every resident in town that uses that facility. A business plan, I haven't seen a business plan on bringing in money. There's someone else that said they were going to build a rec center in town. They said they couldn't make it work with the numbers. But I hear tonight that there's going to be money flowing from every corner of the world to fund this place. I haven't seen a business plan that addresses that. If I went to the bank to build a rec center, they'd want a business plan the first thing out the gate. I have not seen that. I'm not opposed to this project. I think the town needs it, but there's not every single person in town that wants this project. And I think taxing every single person is the wrong answer. One, I don't care. I think 70 bucks a year for me is nothing, I don't care about it. But there are people that live paycheck to paycheck, and my constituents that put me here have concerns. We'd have to put an RFP out, those are all things that are going to have to happen. So those are some of the questions I've got. I don't know if anybody has any answers to any of those. We've got $18 million in current facilities, deferred maintenance. We have no plan to address any of those. We have no idea what those are going to cost. If it doesn't fit in one part of town, it shouldn't go anywhere. I agree with Ed. You're going to turn Route 11 into like a warehouse district, like somebody said, with boat districts and other things that are back there. And marketing, if we can't figure out how to work our Zoom account for meetings, I'm not sure a marketing department's going to make money for videos on TikTok and other aspects. That's just my opinion. There's no space for kitchen or upgrades for future building. If there is going to be future building, you're going to cut into parking spaces. So I don't think that's been addressed really. I just have a lot of concerns. I'm not against it. In my mind, what I motioned, I think, works, and voters will either agree to it or not, or push it off till the spring and actually identify what the heck is going on, in my opinion.
I seconded it for the sake of discussion, but also for the opportunity that, obviously, tonight wasn't the crowd we were trying to sell. We had a half opposition, one person, I mean, how many people were here to oppose the project? We had all support. I support it. It's got, for me, from day one, from the initial project, it wasn't a matter of if, it was a matter of when. And it's going to, a NISAP, it's a necessity for our community, I believe it. I think this opportunity, this idea that Colin is proposing illustrates to the opposition that there's a serious commitment by the fundraising of the project opposed to all the tax burden that goes along with it. I think it's a gesture to those naysayers that says, this committee, this project is, they're committed, they're, they are confident they're going to do it. They know they're going to raise the money to do it. And they're, the town will pay the half, will put up the half, and the other half is the committee saying, we can do it. And I think it's an opportunity to win over the naysayers. That's, that'd be the only, like, that's my take on it. The other stuff, I don't, you know, I think, and this isn't, this isn't a rushed project by any means, after how many years and how many times we've talked about it, proposed it, or not. I think this is an opportunity to sell the naysayers. I mean, we've gotten, you guys have done an incredible job. We've got, all the stars are aligned, and the committee we have right now, making things happen, it's just maybe three and a half is, is the sweet spot. And, but if the, if those naysayers, then don't come out for this, just come out to vote, then, I mean, nobody has to get up and say anything to try to sell me on this. This is, I believe this project needs to happen. But I see that this is an opportunity to, to say something to the naysayers that will come out and force, and they have, you know, they have. And it's been right down the middle, well, not right down the middle, obviously, because it's lost, it's been denied or shot down. But it wasn't an irrefutable defeat by any means. It was, we'll say it was half and half, didn't, you know. So we need to convince the other half that we're in it to win, you know? That's, that's why I like the idea that Colin's proposing, and maybe I'm not married to the idea, but...
I think there's always going to be naysayers on every single project we ever want to do. And I think there's going to be, if we, if we need to build some, the school budget, there's going to be people who think that we shouldn't put tax dollars towards it. We need this gym. We've looked into this for years. There's no question in my mind, I am absolutely confident that in the long run, it's the right decision. And I think it should be the town that's building this gym. And I don't necessarily think the fundraising is, is going to happen the way we anticipate it to happen. I don't necessarily think this gym is going to be this financial boom, but we need it. We need this gym, no matter what, for the residents. So I'm opposed to involving a private partnership at all. I think this is on us.
Also, on the line of what Aileen was saying, I will respectfully disagree with Kevin and Colin, because by the time those funds are raised through fundraising efforts, the cost is going to go up again. I mean, this, it could take them, say, three years to raise the necessary funds. And yet, we're going to be sitting on the one and a half that we want to give to them. And there's no doubt in my mind that in three years, the cost of this building will go up again. So I'm going to vote no on that motion. And we'll see what happens.
I've listened to a lot of things tonight, and I'm encouraged, the fact the word was put out there, that we won't pound a nail or put a building up until such time as the money is in hand. But at the same time, I have concerns about, again, in the winter, whatever we use a building for, we don't have a kitchen that says we have an emergency and got to put people in there in winter storms. We don't have a kitchen to support that. Where they're going to put the kitchen is, is, again, a big concern to me. And I think that building, no matter what it is, needs a kitchen of some sort, and it should be planned ahead of time. The parking, I'm still concerned about. The entrance, where they're taking out the initial double row parking, there's been some talk about moving that facility back 16 feet to put that double parking back in, which the Legion owned one, and the town owns the other half. The parking, they keep talking about, but it's spread all over the place. I mean, it's places that, that you got to walk across that whole parking lot to get to a place. I don't have any problem with the 3 million. I don't have any problem with the 3.5, with funds being raised to offset that. I necessarily have an issue with the way that Colin's got it laid out. I think we should go for the three, and fundraising for the remaining, whatever. So I'll probably vote no on the amendment way it's stated right now. Are we rushing into this? Would it be better on the spring warrant? I think maybe, and look more into where we're going to put this remaining parking and building and expansion, and I just don't see the space for it.
They can use their first portion of fundraising to build a kitchen later. I mean, don't let the kitchen hang you up on this, in my opinion. And, and don't let the location, we're not voting on a location tonight. There's other options.
And even on that site, they could put parking-
They can, absolutely.
Is it the motion that's out there right now that says approve a million and a half only?
That's what my motion is.
That's right, right.
But he didn't, he didn't give a location.
But Teddy, I mean, you can't imagine that, even at three to your three and a half million, that they're going to be able to acquire Norway Savings property and level it to put a building there. The building would probably decrease in size, or something would have to come out of there to fit the excavation costs, which I'm sure is probably at least 100, 200 grand, easy. I have no idea, like-
Half a million.
So, so, I'm sure we all drive around town quite a lot, and I'm sure everybody has seen that Great Northern Docks has pulled off from that nice flat lot beside the fire station. What's wrong with that? Same situation as the Legion.
Right.
You're digging in dirt, you're not digging up stumps and trees, and whatever else is in there. It's a flat lot, it's all sand over there.
So are you saying that we're not voting to put that on the Legion lot tonight?
That's, I haven't heard that in the motion yet.
So what is the motion supposed to be tonight? Just to approve the funding, and then when they come back, we're going to approve a RFP to go out and then a design bill from a company that's going to come back and bid on the process? Is that how we're figuring out this is going to work?
Yep.
So we're going to put out, we're going to put out the bill, we're going to put out the bid, an RFP, and say, hey, please build us a gymnasium, rec center, somewhere in town for three and a half million dollars. That's never going to happen.
By the time we write the RFP, I would hope we would have a location locked down.
Well, I was always under the assumption, all we've been talking is putting it on the Legion lot. I really haven't heard anything different, so. Approve the funding or not-
I think, even Kathy brought up a good point, we'd have to go back to 16 different, you know, however Ed said in their opinions or whatever, about the village overlay, or not, it's not the causeway overlay, right, it's just the village district, to meet those standards, it'd have to change. That's why the original one that we designed over there was seven and a half million, because it was a New England style dormers, you know, a New England-
But that would be a bridge they would cross, they would have three and a half million to research, to say, oh, we figured it out, we can. They, whatever it takes, they can figure it out. If they find a way that they can do it, they've got three and a half, and they kept it within, like they, like Jim was saying, they're not going to swing a hammer until they know they can do it for three and a half.
But only at the Legion.
There is nothing that, there is nothing that says we can't build this on those other two lots.
But they didn't evaluate that piece of property for the three and a half million tag. Their three and a half million tag is strictly the Legion, so it's going to be higher than three and a half over there, based on land, uh-
So the budget may regulate that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you're not going to get the same facility. So you're going to have to either probably down to one court or something else-
We don't know that.
-fit the bill, but you don't, that's, that's what I'm saying, we don't have a lot of questions of unknown answers.
But you have a copy of the budget that's laid out for this project, and-
But not for over there, just for the, just for the Legion.
There's money in there for the excavation, and the landscaping, and the foundation, and all that stuff, and, and on another perfectly flat lot, in the same town, why would that change drastically?
Can I address a couple of these questions? When we started this process, I was not aware of the availability of the lot that the Northern Docks was on, first of all. So we were looking at a four acre lot versus a nine acre lot. And so with the four acres, it has a little bit more challenges for site work. Now you're adding another couple acres that may have less challenges for site work. The other thing that I wasn't 100% aware of is that there is the downtown, or the waterfront municipal development TIF district, and those funds can be used for, they can't be used for a rec center. And, and the 302 TIF, the property that we own is not in that TIF. But up to it is, so you could do some sidewalks or use TIF money for that, which we're probably going to do anyway, and it has part of a different project. But there is some money in the TIF, if we were to go to the other location, that could be used for parking, could be used for bike racks, could be used for landscaping, could be used for lighting. It just could not be used on the rec building. But the problem is, is it feels like you're putting the cart before the horse, but you only have so much money to get concept plans. So what we did was get a concept plan for the lot that we thought we were looking at at the time. If they are really successful in fundraising, maybe we can take that nice metal building and make it look better, and put it over here. If there isn't enough money for fundraising, then we put the one that we designed over there. I think that the question tonight is the commitment to the funds, whether that's 3 million or three and a half million, so we can move forward and maybe do some site investigation over here, to see if, what we can do, how much is it going to cost? And then come back with, this is what we've got for fundraising, this is the marketing that's been done, this is what we have, here's what could be done for the amount of money that we have. And keeping in, in mind that costs only go up, they don't really go down.
How do we know that, okay, the town approves three and a half million straight out, and it's on a handshake that the fundraising is going to go back into the, into bringing that down? Right? I mean, there's not, there's no, there's no contract saying that the fundraising has to go back, you know, the three and a half, after that, they could say, well, we're going to use the money we raised now to make, to make the building look better, to make, improve the parking, improve, you know, other things, instead of putting it back towards, I know we all know, what we want to do is to keep the mill rate down, the tax, you know, the tax burden going down. But what the taxpayer, the naysayers can say to us, where, why do they have to pay it back? If we're giving them the three and a half million, then why do they, they can fundraise now and not pay it back?
So the budget committee met Thursday, it wasn't televised or Zoom capable. Did they discuss or evaluate what next year's mill rate is going to be, and what this 11 to 18 cent increase could mean to that budget? Or are they just saying, whatever it is, it doesn't matter, they don't care? Does anybody know? I wasn't able to see-
They enthusiastically supported it. It was, the vote was seven zero zero.
But did they discuss next year's budget, and what that mill rate might be, and what it could be impacted from this 11 to 18 cents?
No, but they felt very strongly about endorsing it.
So did everybody in this room, but there weren't the people that don't vote yes in this room. I mean, there's 77 comments on Facebook, half of them were no.
The problem is, they still show up to vote.
That's exactly the problem. Jim and I had this conversation today. Age 25 to like 55, people will come out to vote, but they don't come to the meetings to voice their opinions. It's weird.
Go ahead.
First of all, the committee's recommendation is to build this building at the Legion. Just so we're clear, that is the committee's recommendation. So if the select board is changing the direction to the causeway, we have to go back to the dry, we did test pit, I mean, everything has been done, the pricing has been done, everything has been done to put this at the Legion, because we believe that that's the cheapest, the cheapest place you're going to get, a three and a half million dollar project. It will cost more than three and a half million dollars to put it where you're asking. How much more, I have no idea. But I can tell you right now, the road cut, just to get the lanes in, and the turning lanes in, which we're not going to have to do on Route 11. No, no, just, that's just one item. Then you got to put a 100, 125, 150 car parking lot, whereas where we are now, we're going to be sharing parking, so you don't quite need as much, because both entities are going to be sharing it. And the list is going to go on and on. There's multi-levels to that facility over there. So it will cost more money, and we're not talking 500,000. It will cost more money to put it over there. That's just a fact. How much more? We have not investigated that. But it will cost more. This is not a community center. This is not a warming center. This is not for the food pantry to move over there. There is no kitchen. Now, we've talked about putting in a, what we would call a snack shack kitchen. If there's an event that goes on there, it's going to be catered. If somebody has a wedding there, they're not using Naples Kitchen and cooking popcorn and hot dogs. It's going to be catered. If there's a big event going on, it's going to be catered. There's actually a huge opportunity for the American Legion to cater some of the events, since they're in the same parking lot. There's a fact, there's a huge opportunity. Parking should not be the enemy for the Legion. Parking should be the benefit for the Legion, because you're going to have all this traffic, this new traffic, that is coming into that facility. And if the Legion does their job right, they're going to take advantage of that traffic.
It's a private club, they can't, they're open to public, aside special events.
Well, maybe they should change their rules and do something different.
National charter, they can't.
Well, whatever. But this is a recreation center. That's what we were tasked to do, not to build a community center. So that's what we did. And in turn, we got two gyms out of it, because we could put it over there. So what this committee is asking for is simple. A recommendation by the select board to put the warrant for three and a half million dollars, not to exceed three and a half million. Our commitment, what we've been saying all along, is we feel confident that we can get that down to 3 million. There's no way that I would, or this committee would say, we're going to feel confident that we can raise 1.5 to 2 million dollars.
Three meetings ago, Jim, you said you were going to get down to zero cost mill rate increase for taxpayers.
I didn't say that.
On TV, I'll find the clip and send it to you.
No, what I said was, that the select board had a reserve that was healthy enough, and that we had TIF money that we could put toward this project, and making up the difference wouldn't be that difficult. We now found out we can't use TIF money, because it's not in the TIF district, you'd have to rewrite the rules for the TIF, number one. And as a budget committee member who's been on the budget committee for nine years, I was shocked to find out from Randy that the surplus is gone, and you guys have less than 2 million dollars, which makes no sense to me. And when Jason was here, he kept saying that there's no reason why the town can't throw a million dollars toward this project. So things have changed rapidly here. You've got two years of audits you still don't have yet, and nobody knows what's in the surplus anymore, but everyone's saying it's down to 2 million, less than what your policy is, to have, to have that surplus.
Did you guys have that conversation in the budget committee? Are you still on the budget committee?
Yeah.
Did you guys have that conversation Thursday night, talking about the surplus and the 18 cent increase, if it possibly impact that?
Yeah, we did.
And you guys are still seven up?
Yeah, because this, this town needs this. They've been trying to build it for six years.
Half the town thinks so.
Okay, so let's address the naysayers. The naysayers are going to be there, whether we put it on the Beegan property, whether we put it on the land that we bought, or we put it at the Legion. Those people aren't going away. They're against it, they're against it. Our job is to convince enough people who support it to get out and vote. That's, that's our job. There's not much we're going to be able to do for the naysayers, because they're going to vote this down no matter what. So don't think you're going to solve the naysayers' problem by putting it on the Beegan property. That ain't going to solve that problem. And remember, your naysayers are your vocal minority. Those are the ones that speak the loudest. There's a lot of people who are on Facebook. There's a lot of people that support this, but they don't go running up the mountain telling everyone they support it. So I, I could care less what Facebook says. I could care less what the naysayers say.
I agree with you.
If, if we're going to run this town, if we're going to run, it's not a poll. If we're going to, if, if we're going to run this town by Facebook, nothing's going to get done. Absolutely nothing.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
Vote.
I'm only on Facebook for Marketplace, but I will say I jumped into the chat. There were 77 comments and half of them were against it.
Fine.
So, and you can tell by the polls, every time we go to vote for this thing, it's more say no. So I have concerns. We're not winning hearts and minds.
Can I just say, when you do the math, if you divide 3.5, take 3.5 million and you look at the number of people that live in this town, it comes out to less than a thousand dollars per person for the rest of their lives, they have a community center. It's, I, I don't even think this is about a mill rate. This is about what, it's, it's about the greater good.
I got, I got a question. I need some clarification, Colin, because you said a couple of things that I thought were, I didn't make any sense to me. So one is, do you believe in, that if anybody is against something, they shouldn't be, have to pay for it? Like, do you believe that a vote should be a hundred percent, right?
I pay school taxes. I don't use, but they show up to the polls on.
But, but so, so what you're saying is, if, I'm, I'm asking, I really want to know.
Sure.
That, because a lot of people, like if, if it goes to vote and the major, like it, to, for the three and a half million to be voted, it'd have to be a majority of voters, right? I, I'm just, I tell you what, I understand it. But you're saying that even if the majority of the voters, you don't want them to have the opportunity to vote because even if the majority of the voters voted, there are still some people who shouldn't have to pay that taxes because they didn't vote it? Is, is, I mean.
No, that's all I'm saying.
It's what you said. I'll go to the tape and play it.
I'm saying we should vote to spend a half, one and a half million dollars that we have in savings and that the rest comes from voters.
Oh, I got that. And I think it's great. I think it's great. But you did say that voters who aren't, who are against it shouldn't have to pay for it if the majority wants it. You said that and that's, I just, that's not how, that's not, I mean, you could, we could try to change how, right?
Yeah, I mean, I get it, but.
Secondly, you, you talked about, you were talking about the fundraising money and I don't know, I don't know what the fundraising people are capable of. I do know they have a ton of energy and I believe in what they're going to do. So nobody really knows. So to, to put on, to say half, one, you know, one and a half million dollars, uh, it's going to take time. I think they'll get there. I don't know. Their, their energy's there, but that does, that's not something you raise, you know. You know, if they can, if they can raise a one and a half million in a couple of years, that's, that delays the start of this. A child who was in kindergarten, the first time we started to try this, rush this through, is now in high school. They missed all those years of not having a gym. And many people are no longer with us that had a chance for that. They're no longer with us because we've rushed this through. I've been involved with it for five years and it was going on long before I started. So the rush through crowd, that's on you. Okay, that's on every, and I'm serious. I've, I've watched this. I've watched select boards, budget committees, just come up with reasons why it needs to be pushed down the road, come up with reasons why we can't have this now because a few, a handful of their buddies don't want, whatever the reasons are. And we've put it to the voters and everybody knows this is it. Like if, right, three times, at this, at this cost, if they're not voting, they're probably not going to vote it. But to, to come up with, with this idea, to me, doesn't make any sense. You, but, so the fundraising, I, I get, I don't know either. It's, it's a big question. We haven't done it before.
So here's a question. If you guys go out and raise 100,000 dollars, is that, that's it? What are you guys going to do? That's it? That's all you raised? 100 grand? Are you going to continue to push and push and push? Are you going to have that energy? Is there a mark you're going to hit on the wall or is it like?
The building's not going to be built until they, they've raised enough to build the building, right? So, so if they raise 100,000 and the voters are voting in three, you know, three, 3 million, there's a contingency for 3, for 500,000. And if this building can't be, be built with that, then it won't be built until they have more. So it will take longer, correct. But 3 million dollars voted in, by the way, I don't think I have to explain that stuff to you. I think, I know you get the finances of that. The other thing is you, you had talked about the money we'd be making with the building. How much money did the rec department have in revenue last year?
I don't know that front of me, I'm sorry.
Right, so we made.
It'd be nice if I had it from him.
It would be nice. It would be nice. It's been presented to you. Um, it's a, it's a hundred, it's like right around 144,000 dollars. Nickel and diming, trying to keep prices down, going out to get sponsors so that our parents don't have to pay more. So that doesn't count sponsorship money, donation money, all that money that we, right? It's not a lot. It's not super impressive. But it's with no gym and weak fields and try to, you know, so all this stuff, so I can assure you, I can provide you a business plan if that's what you want. We can, we can, we can do that. Um, but I just think tonight, we came here after, after seven years or whatever to get to this point. It's, to, to me, the vote is, I guess the, I don't even know what vote's up there, but I just was a little u- upset by your, the way you, you proposed that because not, because some people are against it, they shouldn't have to pay taxes. I think that's, I'm against a lot of things that I don't use, that I pay taxes for because the majority of the people voted for that, you know, so. That's all I got, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, can we take the vote?
Well, I guess I'll, I want to respond to some comments real quick, just again, my opinion. Um, what I heard was building it on the Beegan property is, is making the naysayers happy. That's not my thoughts at all. Um, I know that this town is starving for extra parking in the village district. And I think this could be an opportunity to kill two birds with one stone. Is that going to change my vote at the poll? Absolutely not. I am all in favor of this. I have, I voted in favor of the last two proposals, whether it was 17 and a half million or 7 million. I voted for it because I know the need of the town. Um, if, if we approve the funds at the November ballot, we have time throughout the winter to research that third property and see if it's feasible with the money that's been approved. That's my thoughts. Um, if it's, if it's not doable, some professional engineer can tell me that it's not doable. That's fine, but on this, I want to be clear that on November 4th, when they vote for the money, they're not voting for the location. It's not on the warrant. And all we're asking for is the money. Figure out the source later. Anybody else? Will vote on Colin's motion. You want to repeat it, Colin?
No, Kevin wants to revoke his second. I'll just revoke it.
Craig, you got something? Go ahead, quick.
I guess my frustration is that we started this thing on January 14th, right? We had one member dial in from the select board. I don't know where you guys were. I mean, it's not like we're rushing this through. It's not like we didn't have, you know, you, you couldn't have found out when the meetings were going on. Your, your input could have been valuable and not put us in this position. I'm embarrassed.
What time was those meetings?
3 o'clock.
Full time.
It's flexible. When are you available? Nobody ever.
No, I was, I was hearing feral cats trying to get people to come there. We came up with that time. If you could have come to a couple of them, asked for the minutes, talked to us, you didn't.
To that point, are the minutes online? Are the video recordings from those meetings online? Are the minutes online? Can anybody see that stuff?
It was, it was.
So there's no minutes for that group?
It was a, it was a work group. It was not a committee.
So there's no meeting. We created it to find a path forward. We asked three people, four people to join that committee work group to come up with a cheaper plan so that we could move forward. Again, I'm not against the project. You guys all think I'm against it.
I know, but.
I voted twice to approve it. Like, I don't understand.
But, but you're saying that we, we rushed this thing through and we didn't rush this thing through.
I'm not saying you guys didn't rush it through. Some of the other aspects, a public hearing, a budget committee meeting that were both rushed. There was no set schedule for what should have been happening. The people of the residents should have been informed. Maybe there would have been more naysayers here. Who knows? The budget committee meeting, I found on Wednesday night. I wasn't even down. Not Zoom capable, not on LRTV. That's strange and embarrassing.
That's, that's.
That's not their problem.
I'm not saying it's theirs. I'm just saying in general, that's what happened. I'm not saying, I'm not blaming anyone.
The, the town, the previous and the current town manager would have welcomed any of you. If he had been asked, you know, can we change the time of the meeting to accommodate us? I'm sure we would have tried to do it. I have been, that, we have invested an enormous amount of our time and I, I am speechless.
Repeat your motion, Colin, please.
Kevin said he's not fair. If he wants to rescind his second, I'll just rescind my motion. If you guys want to make a different motion, we save a bunch of time.
Retract my, my second. Retract my motion.
So we need a new motion.
I'd like to make a motion. Article one, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise inappropriate for the building of a recreation center. Recommend 3,500,000 plus interest appropriate from the TIF fund, 500,000 appropriate from the undesignated fund balance, 500,000 rise from taxes, 2,500 principal and 1,459,734 interest. On, um, as listed on the warrant, as written.
I'll second that. Motion and second. Any questions from the board?
Hang on one second.
Just a point of clarification. That means it can't be built at the Legion because you can't use TIF fund in the Legion. It's out, it's outside the TIF district. So what you're saying is it has to be built at the other property because that money doesn't exist.
Kathy, I thought the TIF district went up Route 11. It doesn't go that far? I know it goes up Route 11, but it doesn't go that far across the region?
Earlier in the meeting, Kathy, you said that the TIF money could be used as long as it was for two TIFs.
There's two TIFs. I'm talking about the, the waterfront village TIF. The, the map for the TIF, for the 302 TIF does not include this parcel. It goes, it actually omits even the part of the parcel next to the Legion on 302. I'm not a hundred percent sure why the map was drawn the way that it was when it was established, but it does not include the Legion or the town-owned parcel property. Um, there is no provision for offsite improvements in that particular TIF. Now, TIFs can be amended. It takes a little bit of time, usually around $10,000 to a lawyer to have them amend it and make sure it's, it works for the state. But there has been some changes in the statute that does allow for some recreational uses. I don't know if that would be the case with this particular TIF because of the way it was designed. And I've been here for a year and I just read the entire TIF today because it's, some of it's new knowledge, new information for me. So funding it from the TIF at this point with the TIF as it's currently written would eliminate the property next to the Legion.
Jim, you were here when the.
That's on me. I wrote that before we finish reading the TIF.
I, I rescind my motion and make a new one.
I rescind my second. Does that make sense?
I guess my question is, if I'm a voter, I just want to know if I'm voting for 3.5 million dollars for a recreation center or a gym, that's just what I want to know if I'm voting on. I don't need to know where the money's coming from. I just want to know that the town is going to come up with 3.5. I guess my question is, if I'm a voter, I just want to know if I'm voting for 3.5 million dollars for a recreation center or a gym, that's just what I want to know if I'm voting on. I don't need to know where the money's coming from. I just want to know that the town is going to come up with 3.5 million somehow to make this gym. Am I in favor of that or not?
I think you have to specify that on the warrant though. It's got to be spelled out. It's got to be spelled out.
You're going to have to, because some people are going to vote, if you're not going to tell me where I'm building it, I'm not giving you three and a half billion. I can see a lot of people saying that. They don't even know where they want to build it, but they want three and a half billion. How they know you can build it for three and a half? They don't even know where it's going. You, you're going to have to put words verbiage in there.
Do you think it needs to say?
Or, or it needs to say, um.
Town-owned property?
Town-owned property.
Okay.
Something.
Okay, 3.5 million dollars on town-owned property.
Plus interest.
Plus interest.
And we leave out the 500 for the undesignated, which we don't know if we even have. If our budget is not, it's accurate, like you're saying.
I don't think you can motion that anyways right now with our current policy. We'd have to change the policy before we can make that official.
Jim, you said it was, what, 57 dollars for the average property a year for increase in tax dollar?
Randy's got that.
And that's a good thing to.
Kevin, need the mic.
If you, if you finance the whole three and a half million, it would be 19 cents on the mill rate and it would be 63, 65 on an average property, with the average property being 335,000.
Is that a 20-year or 10-year?
20-year. Assume the interest rate at 5%, which odds are the interest rate will be lower.
So for 63 dollars a year, I get a gym. That's pretty sweet. And that's what we need to get the word out. And if there are people on Facebook here, that's what we need to tell them.
Well.
That's based on a, what, what do you have, 335?
335.
So if it's lower, if you have, if you have a house worth 150,000, that's even less, right?
So from a logistical standpoint, our plan, the voters accept this on November 1st, whatever, the, the November, whatever date. Within 30 days, we get the RFPs ready to go. Now we can't do that. So now you're expecting us through the winter to see if we can put a round hole and a square peg and try to put it at the Beegan property? Because you're not going to, you're not, you're not making a decision of where it's going. So we're going to spend all winter trying to figure out if it could possibly fit at the Beegan property through test pits, through this, that, the other thing. So now the building, RFPs can't go out. Building takes four months to be fabricated, shipped before we can even start erecting it. So there will be no rec center in 2026. The earliest you'll have a rec center, maybe, is in 2027 if we can figure out a way to build it for three and a half million at the Beegan property. Where along this process does somebody say, okay, go ahead, build it at the Legion because it's not going to fit? The round hole's not going to fit in the square peg? Who makes that decision? And, and along the process, along the way, who, who's the almighty God that makes that decision? You guys, are we, are?
So, so the only difference with the Beegan property, test pits have already been done over there by Great Falls when we first initiated that. So the only difference over there is a traffic study because of the turning lanes and what, excavation?
Great Falls.
Did test pits over there.
Yeah, and they told you it was going to cost 7 million to build one gym?
Well, that was for that design. I'm saying, I think Teddy's saying this design on the Beegan property, or he's thinking about that.
How, how long did it take for?
This is a bigger building than what they were suggesting. Our building is bigger. It was going to cost 7 million for their building on the Beegan property. And you think we can put our building, which is bigger, on the Beegan property for half that price? So either, either Great Falls doubled their price or they do something all the rest of us don't know. And that is you can't put a building on that property for three and a half million dollars. I mean, you paid somebody 90,000 dollars and the voters voted it down because they didn't want to spend 7 million. All you got to do is go back to what they presented. And, and you're going to know it can't be built for three and a half million.
I don't think that's what Ted's suggesting. I got wrong.
How long did it take to get an answer from the engineering firm that you could build it at the Legion? From when they dug the test pits and, and went over the design? How long did it take to get that answer? Because we have about seven weeks before the vote. Is it doable to get that answer of whether or not the Beegan property is doable?
Yeah.
Well, that's just, that's just to see if this building, which we've already paid for the foundation plans and everything, that this building can sit on that property. Now you're going to figure out where the septic's going to go, which has to be 300 feet away from the well. You're going to figure out where the parking, 100 and some odd parking spaces are going to go. I mean, that whole. I mean, that whole property has to be developed. You know, we, we already have a parking lot at the Legion. We already have flat land. We already have land. We know where the septic's gonna go. All those things have been tested. There's no hills or ledges. This entire project can't be built on the Beegan property. So you need to go on the multi-level property that's next door that we bought. So once you're on the multi-level property, then you've got all kinds of additional costs associated with that multi-level property.
That Beegan lot is three times the size of the footprint that you have at the.
Is the only reason you got, you want to put it on the Beegan property is so you have a hundred parking spaces? As far away from the causeway as possibly can be for overflow parking? Cause just build the parking lot there. If you, if you're so hot on the Beegan property for overflow parking for the causeway, just build, just build a parking lot.
We've, we've been encouraging people to park there anyway.
Okay, then build a parking lot. Cause from what I'm hearing, the reason you guys want to put it at the Beegan property is so you solve two birds with one stone by having parking. You can solve your parking problem very easy. Nobody's gonna park up there. Nobody wants to walk all the way from the causeway and park all the way up at the Beegan property. The ones that are parking on the grass area that you're talking about are the ones that go to the town beach and it's busy on a particular hot day, so they park across the street. It is not all the people at the causeway walking all the way up to the Beegan property to park. That's not what's happening. So.
I love the idea of a gym at the Legion field. So that's, but in talking to other residents, their question is, well, why aren't we building it in the place where we approved in the vote to build it?
Cause they voted it down.
No, no, when we bought the property.
Yeah.
Okay. But they want to know, well, I thought they're building, you, you guys are building it there. And then somebody else will say, well, what about this lot where Great Northern docks was? So I, I would like to be able to just answer that and say, because the, this other lot is roughly gonna be seven million dollars and we can do it here for three point five. And this other lot is gonna be roughly nine million dollars and we're gonna build it here for three point five. That's the only place that I'm coming from.
Well, those answers won't happen before election day.
Right.
So.
Hi, I'm Laura Shackness. I have one more point that you should consider besides the cost. By putting it at the Legion field, you create a sports complex. Brian will be located there. All the equipment will be stored in the, the, what do we call it? The storage facility in the building. Everything is centrally located. He can have his camps there. He can have all the equipment there. All the kids are located. You're not gonna have to worry about transporting kids from, from, from one area to another area, to this area. They can keep it all confined in one location. Which logistically is huge to have a sports complex.
Pre-existing parking, although most of it's Legion, it's still. It's definitely, it'll definitely keep the cost down.
So I think the question right now is on the warrant, does it need to say the Legion field? Right?
I've been fifty-fifty on, I've been whether it should be over the lake or over there. I think the lake is great and there's benefits, the bathrooms, the bathing and the parking. As far as the usage, I think it's more seasoned.
I guess my question is if I'm a voter, I just want to know if I'm voting for three point five million dollars for a recreation center or a gym. That's just what I want to know if I'm voting on. I don't need to know where the money's coming from. I just want to know that the town is gonna come up with three point five million somehow to make this gym. Am I in favor of that or not?
I think you have to specify that on the warrant though. It's got to be spelled out. It's got to be spelled out.
You're gonna have to, cause some people are gonna vote against. If you're not gonna tell me where I'm building it, I'm not giving you three and a half billion. I can see a lot of people say that. They don't even know where they want to build it, but they want three and a half billion. How they know you can build it for three and a half billion? They don't even know where it's going. You're, you're gonna have to put words verbiage in there.
Do you think it needs to say?
Or, or it needs to say.
Town owned property?
Town owned property. Something.
Okay, three point five million dollars on town owned property.
Plus interest.
Plus interest.
And we leave out the five hundred for the undesignated, which we don't know if we even have. If our budget is not as accurate as you're saying.
I don't think you can motion that anyways right now with our current policy. We'd have to change the policy before we can make that official.
Jim, you said it was what fifty-seven dollars for the average property a year for increase in tax dollar?
Randy's got that.
And that's a good thing to.
Kevin, you need a mic.
If you, if you finance the whole three and a half million, it would be nineteen cents on the mill rate and it would be sixty-three, sixty-five. On an average property with the average property being three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Is that a twenty year or ten year?
Twenty year. Soon the interest rate of five percent, which odds are the interest rate will be lower.
So for sixty-three dollars a year, I get a gym. That's pretty sweet. And that's what we need to get the word out. And if there are people on Facebook here, that's what we need to tell them.
Well.
That's based on a, what, what do you have, three hundred and thirty-five?
Three hundred and thirty-five.
So if it's lower, if you have, if you have a house worth a hundred fifty thousand, that's even less, right?
So from a logistical standpoint, our plan, the voters accept this on November first, whatever, November, whatever date. Within thirty days, we get the RFPs ready to go. Now we can't do that. So now you're expecting us through the winter to see if we can put a round hole and a square peg and try to put it at the Beegan property. Because you're not gonna, you're not, you're not making a decision of where it's going. So we're gonna spend all winter trying to figure out if it could possibly fit at the Beegan property. Through test pits, through this, that, the other thing. So now the building, RFPs can't go out. Building takes four months to be fabricated, shipped before we can even start erecting it. So there will be no rec center in 2026. The earliest you'll have a rec center maybe is in 2027. If we can figure out a way to build it for three and a half million at the Beegan property. Where along this process does somebody say, okay, go ahead, build it at the Legion, cause it's not gonna fit. The round hole's not gonna fit in the square peg. Who makes that decision? And, and along the process, along the way, who, who's the almighty God that makes that decision? You guys are, we are.
So, so the only difference with the Beegan property, test pits have already been done over there by Great Falls when we first initiated that. So the only difference over there is a traffic study because of the turning lanes and what excavation?
Great Falls.
Did test pits over there.
Yeah, and they told you it was gonna cost seven million to build one gym.
Well, that was for that design. I'm saying, I think Teddy's saying this design on the Beegan property, or he's thinking about that.
How, how long did it take for?
This is a bigger building than what they were suggesting. Our building is bigger. It was gonna cost seven million for their building on the Beegan property. And you think we can put our building, which is bigger, on the Beegan property for half that price? So either, either Great Falls doubled their price or they knew something all the rest of us don't know. And that is you can't put a building on that property for three and a half million dollars. I mean, you paid somebody ninety thousand dollars and the voters voted it down because they didn't want to spend seven million. All you gotta do is go back to what they presented. And, and you're gonna know it can't be built for three and a half million.
I don't think that's what Ted's suggesting. You're wrong.
How, how long did it take to get an answer from the engineering firm that you could build it at the Legion? From when they dug the test pits and, and went over the design? How long did it take to get that answer? Cause we have about seven weeks before the vote. Is it doable to get that answer of whether or not the Beegan property is doable?
Yeah.
Well, that's just, that's just to see if this building, which we've already paid for the foundation plans and everything, that this building can sit on that property. Now you're gonna figure out where the septic's gonna go, which has to be three, three hundred feet away from the well. You're gonna figure out where the parking, a hundred and some odd parking spaces are gonna go. I mean, that whole property has to be developed. You know, we, we already have a parking lot at the Legion. We already have flat land. We already have land. We know where the septic's gonna go. All those things have been tested. There's no hills or ledges. This entire project can't be built on the Beegan property. So you need to go on the multi-level property that's next door that we bought. So once you're on the multi-level property, then you've got all kinds of additional costs associated with that multi-level property.
That Beegan lot is three times the size of the footprint that you have at the.
Is the only reason you got, you want to put it on the Beegan property is so you have a hundred parking spaces? As far away from the causeway as possibly can be for overflow parking? Cause just build the parking lot there. If you, if you're so hot on the Beegan property for overflow parking for the causeway, just build, just build a parking lot.
We've, we've been encouraging people to park there anyway.
Okay, then build a parking lot. Cause from what I'm hearing, the reason you guys want to put it at the Beegan property is so you solve two birds with one stone by having parking. You can solve your parking problem very easy. Nobody's gonna park up there. Nobody wants to walk all the way from the causeway and park all the way up at the Beegan property. The ones that are parking on the grass area that you're talking about are the ones that go to the town beach and it's busy on a particular hot day, so they park across the street. It is not all the people at the causeway walking all the way up to the Beegan property to park. That's not what's happening. So.
I love the idea of a gym at the Legion field. So that's, but in talking to other residents, their question is, well, why aren't we building it in the place where we approved in the vote to build it?
Cause they voted it down.
No, no, when we bought the property.
Yeah.
Okay. But they want to know, well, I thought they're building, you, you guys are building it there. And then somebody else will say, well, what about this lot where Great Northern docks was? So I, I would like to be able to just answer that and say, because the, this other lot is roughly gonna be seven million dollars and we can do it here for three point five. And this other lot is gonna be roughly nine million dollars and we're gonna build it here for three point five. That's the only place that I'm coming from.
Well, those answers won't happen before election day.
Right.
So.
Hi, I'm Laura Shackness. I have one more point that you should consider besides the cost. By putting it at the Legion field, you create a sports complex. Brian will be located there. All the equipment will be stored in the, the, what do we call it? The storage facility in the building. Everything is centrally located. He can have his camps there. He can have all the equipment there. All the kids are located. You're not gonna have to worry about transporting kids from, from, from one area to another area, to this area. They can keep it all confined in one location. Which logistically is huge to have a sports complex.
Pre-existing parking, although most of it's Legion, it's still. Selling point real. It's definitely, it'll definitely keep the cost down.
So I think the question right now is on the warrant, does it need to say the Legion field? Right?
I've been fifty-fifty on, I've been whether it should be over the lake or over there. I think the lake is great and there's benefits, the bathrooms, the bathing and the parking. As far as the usage, I think it's more seasoned. Or at the fields. Two months of swimming and you get only once.
So it's the, the before and after summertime programs that we talk about do not use the fields. Is that correct, Brian?
Say that one more time, I apologize. My wife was asking me where Anne.
The before and after programs and the summer rec programs are now housed out of the Singer Center.
So the, yeah, the before and after care program is not run by the town of Naples. If we were to run one, I'd want to run it in the schools regardless of the property. But if, but the summer camp right now is being run in the school, Songalox Elementary School. So we bus to the beach every day. And it is a cost of about eight thousand dollars this past summer to bus the kids to the beach. So there's some benefits.
So you would move that program to this facility?
Uh, for the, no, not necessarily. So if that facility was at, I'm, I'm keeping clean. Like if that facility was at the three oh two property, then probably walk across the beach, that'd be great. However, if the facility was at the plumber field by the Legion, we would split the camp and we would run a sports camp out of that because we have the, we'd have the big gym and the field.
Need to maintain two months of surplus to cover town expenses in case the town ever. The entire town burns down and we need to fix something, we need that money.
So in junior sorts, your undesignated fund balance was about two point three million in June.
And what's our operating cost for a month? Is it one point four, one point two?
Oh, it depends. You mean your average burn rate?
Yeah.
It varies at the beginning of the year, it's slower than the end of the year, but. Yeah. Eight hundred thousand to a million.
So we're like right there. So you could probably take it out.
Well, the other thing too, to keep in mind, you, unlike some towns, you have a TIF fund that's got a million four in it that you could borrow from yourselves if you had a catastrophic emergency and then just pay back that TIF fund.
I thought we were using the TIF fund previously, Jim. You remind me because you've been on the budget committee so long for business development and things like that. So we could theoretically look at amending our TIF districts like we were thinking about anyways, extending them out a couple more years. We could extend. That's what I mean.
No. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? You all set with the motion, Randy?
I am. I got it written down.
So do I. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining. Four zero one. A couple of members would like to take a short recess and use the bathroom.
A couple of members of the public would like to go home and eat.
I would like to. The approval of the sand bid and the propane and oil bid. We have it in front of you with the low bidders marked with the tabs.
Make a motion to accept Fielding's oil and propane.
Yes.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept Fielding's oil and propane. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I make motion to accept. Roll. Core. Proposal for the sand salt.
Second.
Motion and a second for roll core for the sand bid. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Do we want to set that date in October or you want to wait until September's meeting, September twenty-second meeting?
Can always set it in.
What's, what's the date in October?
It'd be the twentieth.
Okay.
Which is a week. A normal meeting would be the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh. The thirteenth is a holiday. The twenty-seventh is too late.
Well, it's October fifth to the thirteenth. I'm gonna be in Alaska, so.
I, the reason I'm asking if we should set it tonight, and I. The reason I'm asking if we should set it tonight, and I think we should, is gives office ample time to advertise it a couple of times in the paper. So, people know, get it on our website and every other source of advertising that we can do.
I'm probably... Are you going for a motion, Tim?
Yeah.
Can I change that? Can I make a motion that we move our select board meeting in October to October 20th for a public hearing on ordinance changes as well as recreational center? But can I also add that the 22nd of September, we also have a public hearing to address ordinance changes and rec center so that it's continuously being talked about? If you guys want to win hearts and minds, I think that's the way to do it.
So, you want to have three public hearings?
Why not?
I'm okay with it. Just keep in mind that we're here until 9:30 and that's...
Well, I think... I would think that this was the prominent one, and the next two can be dialed down a lot more to...
Yeah. I mean, the discussion of us, what we're going to write the language on the warrant took us over an hour.
Yeah, it's already done.
I don't know that you can have the hearing on the 22nd. You could do it earlier, but I don't think you can do it as late as the 22nd.
No, we're talking September 22nd.
Oh, oh.
And October 20th.
Sorry.
Oh, September 22nd.
Yes, our next meeting.
Okay.
Just add a public hearing.
So, keep our agenda simple, please. So, we're not here all night.
And you want both of those ordinances and rec center?
Yeah. I mean, it's good information to get out there.
All right.
So, that's a motion.
Have a motion for our next business meeting with public hearings on rec center and ordinance changes on September 22nd and again on October 20th. Keep in mind that that October 20th meeting will be our only meeting in October because of holiday and et cetera.
So...
He moved it. You seconded it? Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Did you say aye?
I did. Sorry.
Good. You need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
At 9:19 PM.
Audience appreciation.